Meeting call to order today is Tuesday, September 3rd. You should know that.
Tomorrow's a big day.
Ah, yeah. And speaking of it's Councilman Lichardi's but.
Yeah.
Um, no, his is the next day.
Right.
All right. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd is now 6:03 PM. Town council meeting, town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Mark, be lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
Mary Beth Easton, the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Roll call, Councilman Dennison?
Here.
Councilman Lichardi is absent, Councilman Messier is absent, Council Vice President Williamson?
Yeah.
And Council President Goslin?
Here.
Forum is declared. Proclamation, Tree City USA Community.
Mark, you want, you have your glasses, I don't. Can you read that?
Town of West Warwick, Rhode Island citation, celebrating 23 years, Tree City USA Community. Resolve that the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick proudly joins with the West Warwick J.C.'s of Kent County in celebrating their 23rd annual Tree City USA, which augments its townwide commitment to Earth Day, Arbor Day, Ecology Day, and our neighborhood partnerships through the national recertification as a Tree City USA Community, in concert with the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the National Arbor Day Foundation. And further, party congratulations are extended to our J.C.'s for their outstanding and continuous project management of public service at their award-winning J.C. corridor and arbitorium, and their advocacy for the rehabilitation of the Senator Rock Riverwalk, all of which has become a statewide attraction of horticultural excellence over the past two decades. And in dedication to these many endeavors, the West Warwick Town Council is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude and congratulations to the West Warwick J.C.'s for their commitment and dedication to the Town of West Warwick. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of West Warwick to be fixed on this third day, December, so September 2024. David Goslin Jr., Town Council President.
That's who you are. Yeah, our photographer's not here tonight.
Yeah. Do you want me to stand in? Yeah.
I'm sure somebody had a picture.
Do you guys want to go up there? Want me to use your camera?
And thank you for everything that you do down at River Point Park in the walk and everything else.
School building committee update by Left Field and Tectron Architects.
Hi Chris, how are you?
Good evening. Give me the thumbs up Sarah when you're ready for me.
Good. I just want to state your name and address and company you represent.
Uh, my name is Chris Spiegel. I'm from Left Field Project Management and with me today I have
Jeff Wazinski, Principal at Tecton Architects.
Thank you.
We're here before the committee, uh, the Town Council tonight to provide an update on the Rhode Island Department of Education necessity of construction application process. Uh, the agenda for today is we'll go a little bit further into introductions. We'll touch on the overall Rhode Island Department of Education process as well as where we currently are. We'll talk a little bit about our schedule. We'll discuss work to date, ongoing and upcoming work. And then we'll touch again on some of the foundations of this program has been, um, as we've been developing over the last several months. So I said the introductions, my name is Chris Spiegel again. I'm a project executive with Left Field Project Management. Uh, more importantly, I'm a father of two children in Rhode Island's public schools. I live in a community that is also undergoing a, a large planning effort for their public educational facilities. And, um, I live right here, as I said, in Rhode Island. With me I've got Jeff and Jeff's going to introduce a little bit about Tecton.
Thanks, Chris. Um, again, Jeff Wazinski. Um, nice to see you all again. Um, so a little bit about Tecton Architects and our extended team. Tecton Architects has an office in Providence and Hartford. Uh, we're about 50 plus individuals in the firm, uh, made up of planners, programmers, um, and planning and design. And one of the key ingredients to the team, um, that you see on the slide here is the community engagement piece. And I know Chris is going to go, going to go over our community engagement plan, a few slides, um, further on. But our team is really focused on understanding the needs of the community and reflecting those back into some of the planning options that will present as we move along in the stage two applications. So, nice to meet you all and thank you very much.
And, um, Left Field as a company, we are a small business with offices in Providence and Boston, Massachusetts, as well as in Manchester, New Hampshire. We have approximately 50 people that work on our staff and we are all former architects, construction managers, builders in previous lifetimes. Um, so we bring that experience to the table. In terms of the ride process, next play, sorry Sarah. So what is the ride process and why is it important? The Rhode Island necessity of construction process is a process that must be followed if the district is to be reimbursed for the cost of improving its school facilities through the Rhode Island Department of Education. In order to encourage municipalities and school districts to, uh, to advance their school facilities, the Rhode Island Department of Education has created a program which will make investments in school buildings to the tune of over 50% or over 50 cents on the dollar for every investment. What this allows is it allows communities such as West Warwick or Warwick, East Greenwich, South Kingstown to make generational investments in their school facilities and in their community buildings by deferring a lot of that cost onto the state as opposed to taking that burden on themselves. As I mentioned, it is a four-step process. The first step is stage one where you identify the need and I'll go into this in a little bit. Stage two, which is where you develop a solution. Stage three is actually designing the solution and stage four is construction. We are currently at the very beginning of stage two, which is where we develop a solution. During the stage one process, again, we are identifying our need. So we're going into your school buildings and performing facilities, conditions assessments. We're taking a look at every item in the building from the roof to the HVAC systems to the foundations and the structural integrity of the building. We're meeting with administrators, we're meeting with the school building committee and the school committee to understand how teaching and learning is currently done in the district and how they see teaching and learning happening in the future. We listen to the current issues with their school building. Are they limiting in any way their ability to provide education for the students? We take all of that information, that data, as we say, and we develop it into a stage one and we submit that stage one to the Department of Education for their review and approval. I'm happy to report that that data, and that is all that is, is just data collection. We form no solutions. We make no recommendations as to a solution during the stage one process. Was approved by the Rhode Island Department of Education and they granted us the ability to move into stage two. Stage two is where we again, we develop the solution. Now, it's important to note that the solution that is developed in stage two, if it is approved by this committee, the Town Council, is not what actually gets built. It is a programming exercise. It defines the spaces that you need. It defines a budget for the program. It designs a, a schedule. The scope of work in general, the actual details of the buildings such as the color, the paint, or how tall it is, that all gets worked out in the stage three. Stage three, stage two is a pricing and programmatic exercise. The reason for that being is just like this Town Council, the Rhode Island Department of Education is a steward of taxpayer money. So before they allow you to go any further into the process, they want to make sure that you are accurate in your assumptions and in the design that you are estimating. They do not want to end up in a situation where you cannot move forward with the project because you haven't done your, your due diligence in terms of the price and the ability for a community to take on a program. So that's very important as to where we are. In terms of the current work that we are doing, uh, sorry, let's touch on the schedule next. Um, as you can see, we are here in September. We have completed our facilities, conditions assessments. We are continuing to move forward with educational programming and visioning. Again, this is meeting with teachers, uh, meeting with district heads, meeting with, uh, specialist groups like the Special Education Advisory Committee and we're listening to them. We're trying to understand not just what they need now, but what they need in the future to provide the best education possible for their students. We have a series of community conversations scheduled. Those are in the yellow circles before you on 9/18, 10/23, 11/20, and on January 22nd. These are opportunities for town hall style meetings for us to go and again, listen to the community. Listen to parents, listen to students, listen to people that live near the schools, hear what their concerns are. Are they concerned about traffic? Are they concerned about, uh, are the parents concerned about the fifth grade not being in elementary school? What are their primary concerns? And we listen to them and we listen to the community and the neighbors, the butters to make sure that we're incorporating all of their needs into our stage two plan. Um, once we move forward with these, this programming educational needs, we'll start to develop some conceptual options. We are not there yet, but what these conceptual options are, again, is a preliminary plan for what you might like to do with your school buildings. Does that mean we were thinking about redistricting? Does that mean we're thinking about renovating schools? Does that mean we're thinking about building additions to address overcrowding? What are solutions that we can put forward on paper to identify and develop all of the items that we've developed during the stage one application and what we've heard from the community members during these visioning sessions and the listening sections? We are also completing and we can go on to the next slide and perhaps we can come back to this one. But if we look at the work to date and what we're continuing to do, again, we're providing benchmarking analysis. This is when we look at how many students you have in your schools, the square footage of your buildings. We take a look at the size of your classrooms, the size of your specialist spaces such as your auditorium, your gyms, your special education spaces. And we take a look and see, are they meeting the Rhode Island Department of Education's requirements? So that's an important study. That's a benchmarking analysis and I'll give you an example of that in a couple of slides. We're also looking at building scans and existing drawing evaluation. We have gone in, Jeff and his team have gone in and they have scanned all of your buildings using, um, state of the art technology so we can get an accurate representation of what deficiencies you might have in your buildings. We're also doing a site analysis. We're doing investigations to see that if we were to build, um, what parts of sites would make the most sense in terms of building. We're also doing a demographic survey. It is no, uh, West Warwick is one of the few districts in Rhode Island that is seeing an increase in enrollment. One of the first things that struck me when I met with, um, the school building committee was speaking with the director of facilities and he told me that they had to open up over at least two new pre-Ks that they hadn't planned for. Just because of the amount of people that are moving into West Warwick and the students that they're bringing with them. So we've hired a company called Cropper G.I.S. and they're going to perform a demographic analysis. They're going to take, work with your planning department and they're going to find out how many buildings are scheduled to be built. Are we looking at renovations? Are we looking at single families that are coming in? Are we looking at multi-family housing? And how that could potentially impact your school programs? Again, we've talked about doing programming. This is again where we meet with the school building committee, the school committee, as well as representatives from each of the schools, parent groups and figure out, you know, what their focus specialized education should be. We also talk about communications. We have an example of a flyer, but how are we going to communicate with the community? How are we going to ask the people in this room, uh, to let us know what their thoughts are on, on a school building program? And I'll get into that in a little bit. And then again, we're continuing to work, um, next slide please. And in terms of what we continue to do, we continue to meet with school leaders. We continue to meet with the school building committee. We continue to hear feedback. What are they hearing from the community? And we continue to refine this program. The ultimate goal is for us in the next month, next few months to come back to this group, the school building committee, um, with a set of options that we believe might be solutions to the current issues that we have been seeing in the district. These options will be varied. They will be, um, from one end of the spectrum to another. We want to make sure that we're investigating every possible solution and not leaving anything on the table. We don't want to get tunnel vision and pigeon ourselves into what we think is one correct solution. That is not our process. That's not the way that the school building committee, um, told us that they wanted this process to go. They wanted to make sure that we were leaving everything on the table and examining every possible option. On the next slide, you'll see an example of some of the data that we've been collecting. As you can see on the left, we have, um, all of the schools in West Warwick. We have their breakout in terms of their enrollment in 10/23, 10/24. We also have the ride guidance in terms of the amount of square footage per student. And what you'll notice here circled or on the right is that your schools are overcrowded. Um, in the case of West Warwick High School, you're over 50% overcrowded. John Deering Middle School is at 20% overcrowded. In fact, the only school uh, that is a little bit under crowded right now is Wakefield Hills Elementary. And that statistic is actually misleading because Ride would actually like you to be at 85%, not 91%, but 85% of your gross square foot is utilized, as they say, utilized for school districts. I've included this slide just as an example of some of the work that we're doing in terms of data collection and then using that data to help draw conclusions about the state of your educational program as well as the state of your building program. So this is just one example of some of the data that we're collecting and that we're using to inform this options decision-making process. Um, in terms of, next slide please. In terms of what we see is happening in the future, again, we're going to be looking at architectural options development. We're going to finalize your educational program. We'll move into preliminary cost estimating, sustainability, goal setting. We'll look at your operating budget and we'll see that if any of our programs could potentially reduce your operating budget. Uh, we'll again go into community visioning and there's a couple of examples of some flyers that we have. Community visioning and public engagement. We'll talk about selecting a preferred option. We'll develop the budget and if the solution does require legislative support, we will move into that section of, of, of the, of the process. There are two ways you can stay connected. The website, www.westwarwicksschoolproject.com, which is going live next week. And of course, the project email, which is westwarwicksschoolproject@gmail.com. If you have any questions about the process, we encourage you to please email westwarwicksschoolproject@gmail.com. It is checked every day and we can get right back to you. As you can see, these two flyers here have been made available. We're putting them out on social media to the best that we can. We're really hoping to drive engagement. We're really only as good as the feedback that we get. Um, next slide please. So in terms of foundations for the program, what have we found to date to be most important in terms of what are the building blocks that we're building this program on? The first is that we have a declining building conditions, that 50% of the schools are rated in poor condition by the Rhode Island Department of Education. That's not by Left Field, that's not by Tecton, that is by the Rhode Island Department of Education. That we have capacity challenges, there's severe overcrowding, middle and high schools especially. There is a cre- increased demand for special education. There has been a 17% increase in individualized education plans or IEPs since COVID, especially pressure at the PK level. We have a growing senior population, so we're looking to use these projects to provide a flexible, multi-generational space that can, that can serve the whole community. And it is a diverse community in West Warwick, so we're looking for unique neighborhood identities and a growing dual language program. And so having these foundations, these are the questions that we're constantly asking ourselves as we get data, as we move forward in the process is, does this improve education? Does this address our overcrowding? Does this benefit the community at large, not just the people that have children in the schools? And does this reflect who we are as West Warwick? So these are the foundations of the programs and the questions that we are continually asking ourselves as we develop solutions and we gather data for this program. Next slide please. So some of the goals and priorities, uh, oh, here we go. I guess it's, it's going to be a nice animation here. Um, I didn't know I could do that, so that's great. Um, what are some of the goals and priorities of this program? What we have heard in no uncertain terms, at the fifth grade, we want to do our best to reintegrate it into the elementary school process. The difference between a fifth grader and an eighth grader is light years away. Um, it makes the most sense from an educational standpoint to move fifth grade back into the elementary school. Are there ways that we can do that? We're looking at space and capacity at the middle school, the physical condition of the space and the layout. Elementary school spaces and capacity issues. We're looking at specialized educational spaces. Perhaps an early learning center for grades PK through one, pre-K through two. We'd like to also consider the number of grade level transitions. And grade level transition is when they would, a student would go to a new school. So as an example, in my school district, my son, um, my son goes to pre-K at one school. Then he goes to kindergarten through third grade at another school. Then he goes to fourth and fifth grade at another school. Then he goes to sixth, seventh and eighth at another school. Then he goes to high school at another school. That's a lot of transitions. Each time your student transitions, that's another opportunity for them to fall back a little bit, right? There are new administrative staff, new principals, a new way of doing business at school. So we're trying to figure out ways to reduce the amount of transitions. Uh, we're also looking at Maisie Quinn specifically to have specialized programs adjacent to the pre-K there. Again, we'd like to see more capacity at the high school for career and technical education. This is something that I'm personally incredibly supportive of. Um, I work, um, I'm on the board for a nonprofit. We go into schools to try to get kids interested in construction and architecture. There's great jobs available in this field. We want to make sure kids know about it. CTE, career in technical education is another example. Um, construction and architecture, just one example of those types of programs. But we want to let kids know that college isn't for everybody. There's a lot of great careers out there and these CTE spaces can help do that. Also looking at transportation challenges due to students across district. And of course, we want to leverage any community oriente spaces in our proposed plan. So how can these schools, again, not just benefit those people with kids in schools in the district? How can they benefit the greater community? And does that mean that we're talking about, um, you know, perhaps, um, um, ELS classrooms? Are we talking about additional meeting rooms? Are we talking about sharing cafeterias with the community? How can we make these places serve the entire community? So those are some of the goals and priorities that we've developed at this time. We can certainly add, we're probably, we're definitely going to be adding in more. We might be taking some away as the project develops, but this is just where we currently are at this very early stage in the stage two process. If we could go back to the schedule, just a couple, um, slides back Sarah. So when are we looking to submit this stage two application to RIDE? We're looking to submit this application in February. So we have now the fall and the winter to develop these solutions, again, meet multiple times with the community to hear their feedback and slowly develop a preferred option. And we're looking at having that preferred option finalized by January. Once we select a preferred option or the school building committee approves a preferred option, they will then get school committee approval and then Town Council approval to submit that option and everything that goes with it to the Rhode Island Department of Education. We are very, very far away from that date. There is still a lot of work to do, a lot of meetings to have, a lot of feedback to hear prior to us getting there. We are just at the very beginning of this process. It's a great opportunity for those that may be in this room or listening at home to get involved and to attend meetings and make sure that their voice is heard. We are still very, very early, as I said. So there's lots of opportunities. If anybody is interested in learning more about this project, please email the project web, uh, the project email so I can get back to you and put you in touch with either a Town Councilor who might want to help you out or I can personally help you figure out the right place to go, the right needing to attend so we can hear your thoughts and words. With that being said, I'd love to take questions, um, from the council or if I can, um, answer, go back to any specific slide and expound a little bit further. The one thing again, I'd just like to leave the group with is that we are still very, very early. There is so many opportunities coming up for us to hear the voices of, of West Warwick and incorporate their feedback into this plan. There is absolutely nothing that is set in stone at this point. Again, we're exploring every single option and feasibility so that we can make, help you guys make the right decision for the future of your school buildings.
Mark, do you have any, I know Mary Beth and I are on the building committee, so this, this is pretty, not so new to us.
One thing I do want to say, just if I could, just declining building condition, schools are in poor condition. I want to make sure that people understand that our buildings are clean and safe as any school buildings there are in this, in this town, in this state. And as we go through, that makes it sound like we're in a deplorable condition. It's about age of infrastructure. It's a, it's about antiquated classroom space, that kind of thing. So, you know, hats off to Mr. Man. Because I would compare our schools and the cleanliness and safety in our schools to any, any schools in, in the state, so.
You are correct. It is not in any way that, that, that misnomer is not in any way a reflection of how clean, how safe
That's right.
your schools are. It literally has to do with the age of your buildings and their value based on the age. And that is set by a Rhode Island, a logarithm that we have nothing to do with.
I don't want people to walk away with the wrong idea.
10/4.
No, I, I don't really have any questions. Uh, maybe a comment or two, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're looking not just to, um, resolve any issues that we currently face, but those issues that might be down the road, including a reduction in, in enrollment. Not just, you know, it, it's a wave, right? We're up and down. We, we happen to be in a period right now where we're seeing uh, an incline in, in registration rates. But yeah, I'm just kind of thinking aloud here. There, there's a lot to be looked at. There's a lot of stuff to go through, a lot more that needs to be done. Looking at the schedule here, I'm, I'm, I'm in it. I'm, I'm here for it. I can't wait to see, uh, what you guys come up with.
So that's a great point. Thank you for bringing it up, um, Counselor Is, because which reason we elected to go with a demographic study is to look at new construction. The formulas that the Rhode Island Department of Education use don't look at things like new construction. How many buildings have been planned or permitted to move forward? They just look at something called cohort survival. And if we were to go by their demographics, you, as you can see, we're the number of students that we were, that were expected, and this is on slide, excuse me. This is on slide. The benchmarking your school slide. Ride expected an enrollment of, of, you know, of 481. You actually got 488 in one school. Now that's a small number. But when we're talking about classrooms, when we're talking about teachers, small numbers make very big differences. So we're making sure that we're not just using the ride numbers, but we're getting an independent, third-party demographic report to better understand what your real enrollments are. And it's about where your new starts are coming from, where your new construction is seen. But people seem to be moving into West Warwick, so I think that's a good reflection on the community.
The only other question I have, um, going back to the scheduling slide was the four public hearing dates or public meeting dates, um, that we have there, 9/18, 10/23, 11/20, and 1/22. How are we going to, I, I mean, I know we advertise through social media, through whatever. But how are we going to get people out there to actually ask those questions and be involved? And, um, is, is the school department going to send an email out to all the parents? What, what do we, you know, because the last thing I want to see is at all four of these meetings, we have it at our budget time. We hear it here, oh, I didn't know about it. I didn't know about it. The vote, I didn't know about it. But yet we've done everything we can to advertise except for a giant mail, all right? Um, but I, I just hate to sit, have these meetings and have two people come to the meeting and, and discuss their concerns and nobody else has any concerns or questions or comments.
So Council President, you, you touched it with a needle and I'm not going to speak for, um, for the superintendent and their internal communication plans, but driving turnout to these meetings is difficult. And it is difficult no matter what community that you work in. It has been difficult, it is what we're, the reason we have spaced them so far apart and to get so many on the calendar is that we want to continue to drive engagement as best we can through word of mouth, through meetings like this, through social media, through a project website, through media management, perhaps talking to the media. We have a very in-depth communication plans, including going to the TV stations, going We have a very in-depth communication plans, including going to the TV stations, going to the paper, working with the school department on sending out emails, things like that. But we're asking your help as well to let your constituents know that these meetings are coming. Please attend them, because we're only as good as the feedback that we receive. And we certainly do not want to presume to make solutions that could affect an entire community without hearing from them. But just as in terms of, to set expectations, it is difficult to drive engagement to these meetings. It, it is. You know, unfortunately, what we see in a lot of communities is people don't come out till the very end, and then it's too late. We don't want that to happen here, so we'll continue to do everything we can to get people involved.
And these meetings will be held at the high school, is that correct?
Correct. And they're open to the public?
Sorry?
So all of the information is on the flyer. So this speech does, full department, like Chris has said, we have a communication plan.
Sorry.
Hi. You know, Chris made a good point, though. There is a communication plan and the school department's part of that is we're going, now that we're back in school and we're, the families are engaged and we're going to start blasting out the flyer. And has flyers are very in-depth, have all the information, place, time, what to expect when, when you get there. We have multiple avenues to, you know, send out information. We've got our bright arrow, like your, your code red system. And, you know, we're going to engage the principals in each building. At the district level, we'll be, we'll be blasting it out. So just to make sure, you know, that we're going to do our part. We have found that when we do that, you know, the wizards show up. So I, I'm confident that we're going to get a turnout if we do our part.
I just wanted people to know it's going to be at the high school auditorium as opposed to the year.
Right, high school auditorium. We want to make sure we have plenty of room for, you know, anybody who wants to be there. And we're really going to rally to make sure people show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to, we, we know we're going to be able to drive school, people that have kids in the schools, their turnout. But we've been told in no uncertain terms by the school building committee that whatever project does move forward, it needs to be a project for the whole community, not just those people that have kids in the schools. So that's where we're going to ask for your help a little bit as a group to help us drive engagement with maybe people that don't have kids in schools, whether that means we go to senior centers or we go to popular spots where people might hang out. We're more than willing to do that. We just like your help in identifying places that we can go so we can help drive engagement and get more people to come out to these meetings.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. Mark, do you have any? Yeah, I know you're part of the building committee too, so.
No, other than just to reinforce the fact that we'll do our part to with the communication plan B, code red, times articles, radio segments, and, and email blast, we'll do that as well.
Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if I were you guys, I'd sneak out right now before we go to the next item, but that's up to you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four town council meeting and cancellation of taxes in the amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents as requested by the tax assessor.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Move a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance says, second reading of an ordinance for an affordable housing agreement in covenant for Lipit Mill and Marathon, with Marathon Development LLC.
Move the ordinance.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have the parties involved with Lipit Mill here?
I thought they were going to be, I don't see them.
Yes.
We did have a meeting, we did have a meeting. As you recall, at the last meeting, I was concerned about what the taxes were going to be that town would collect. And, and we did have a good meeting. It was, it was a healthy conversation and they did indeed confirm that the money that we would get originally from that first phase will be less than the forty-three thousand dollars that they're going to pay us while they're in a construction phase. They, they feel that that's needed. They need to get the four percent. And I think it becomes thirty-seven thousand dollars. I think those were the numbers they talked about. The second phase, it will be at the eight percent. Not at a four percent, it'll be at the eight percent. And then the commercial will be tax regulating. And Sal, correct me, please, if I'm wrong, I think that's what they discussed. Again, I thought they would be here tonight.
Hello, Sal Seko, your tax assessor. Any commercial use would be strictly at
Commercial?
Commercial
Going rate.
Value, whatever the rate is over there. But the new buil, new building, if they do go ahead with a phase two
Yep.
would, and they could go anything. I mean, they could go eight percent with the income part of it, or they could go above. But I think he said they were looking at
Eight percent.
Eight percent with the moderate to low income posing on the new construction.
Correct.
And they were looking for the four percent on the current
First units that they're going to
Sitting there. And with the amount of money that they have with the credits, the tax credits, but the only way they can make it work.
Yeah, they were quite adamant about that. And, and there's, there's no doubt that, you know what, we're, we're not collecting anything right now. Something to be said for that. If it improves the, the neighborhood and the appearance of, of the area, I think it's worth it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone does know that it
And there was a slight decrease between what they would pay now during construction phase.
It'd be forty-three during construction and then about thirty-seven.
But that's only current, because every year there is a two or three percent increase that the federal government allows them to increase. So even though if the tenant might not be able to afford it, the subsidy from the government would kick in and the tax would go up at that point. And I've seen that with all of the other eight percent units that we have in town.
So refresh my memory, if you can. It was somewhere in the sixties, not the number of units for phase one?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five? And phase two is not existing structure, it's what they would build?
So that land, that land actually goes all the way behind the old D'Angelo's in
Right. Does it go all the way down to the other, towards Fairview?
They have stuff on the other side also.
I mean, not D'Angelo's, I'm sorry, subway, subway.
I know what you meant, yes. By Dicky's over there, yeah.
Dicky's, Dicky's parking lot. It, the land goes all the way behind there. So that is phase two that they were looking at doing some sort of
And they're, I don't recall.
We haven't seen those plans.
Yeah, we haven't seen them.
We don't know anything about
That's like ten or twenty years down the road.
Those plans were actually in existence over ten years ago with the very first developer. Joe, you just brought the plan, just to show us what their concept was. But those, these plan, with these new developers, those plans aren't playing. Although they were part of that group way back when, that individual, the first individual went bankrupt without even telling anybody.
But I don't recall them saying anything about eight percent. That was just during the meeting?
So four percent this time.
The first group was in, it was going to be full rate.
Right.
They weren't looking at eight percent. But that was all planned in the future, once the existing one was, was finished. And they never even got close.
And, and from day one, this group has come in and said, to make the numbers work, because of the amount of money they have to put in, they need to have, instead of the standard eight percent, it is just state law.
And they are a
They would like a reduction to the four percent.
They're a low-income group. That's what they do. They do that moderate to low income.
And do we know what they're looking for units in phase two? Do we?
No, because they, right now, it's just a concept.
Yeah. So again, a little less than we're going to get in, which I didn't sit all that well with me, but it will increase over time. And again, that area has been
Light.
Light for a long time. And, and they did reiterate in the meeting that I, I had with them that they are hoping to have people moving in next summer, so.
In twenty-one units by next summer, yes.
So.
And I, I, based off the crowd I see here tonight, I mean, affordable housing is very important in this community.
There is no doubt about that. So, I mean
State of Rhode Island, in the country, but
The gift that keeps on giving.
This, this, this project's been going on since two thousand and ten. You know, even a little earlier. And it's gone through three different owners. And it's, it's sad to see the building sitting there the way it's sitting, you know, all overgrown. I think I asked for it to be cleaned up the last time they were here. And it really didn't get cleaned up. But, you know, I'm hoping, you know, the amount of money they're paying for this building is kind of, you know, their decision and that's how they have to make it work. I mean, it is three point, three point four million dollars that they're looking to get out of bankrupts, out of the bankruptcy court, right? So that's pretty extensive amount of money to put into this project right off the top. So I, I, I feel the same way you do, Mary Beth, but I, I definitely want to see it
Yep.
looking a little better than what it is. And if we just keep letting it go, it's going to get worse. If not, it's going to get burnt down. And that is one of the oldest mill buildings in the state of Rhode Island besides Blackstone, one of them Blackstone. So it was the oldest working mill up till two thousand and ten, when it used to still develop lace for Victoria's Secret and whoever else. But it was one of the oldest working mills in the state of Rhode Island. You have any other questions on that?
No, I, I just see that, I, I'm looking at the ordinance here, forty-three thousand during construction.
Right.
And then four percent. But what about that transition? You know, if they're going to have maybe
No, once we give a CO, whether they have people moved in or not, the CO is there. It'll be based on the full amount of the units available.
It's, it's a potential
Correct.
Gross.
Potentially.
So it's units available?
Correct.
Not
Correct.
What they're actually getting revenue from?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Sixty-five units, it's sixty-five times.
In all their previous agreements, and one thing I got to say I like about this agreement is they're paying something. All the other agree, agreements that were before us, they weren't paying anything but the land tax, correct? If even that
Current agreement didn't even include that.
Yeah, so they, they were paying nothing and here we are going on six or seven years and they haven't had to pay anything in taxes except for bankrupt.
Almost.
I just, I wanted to make sure everybody understood. I think it's the right thing to do. It gets it cleaned up. It gets some housing available for people that need it. And I, it makes sense to me.
This is an ordinance, any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amending the zoning map of the town of West Warwick and amending section five point three, table of uses, and five point one zero, signs, section two, definitions of the zoning code as amended.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Al?
This is a second reading. The big change was the affordable
Al, can you just speak into the mic, the air conditioner came on?
The affordable, accessory dwelling units. Now, this is, this is the, the village commercial. That, we don't know where it came from. And the two lots that were created on, off Washington Street.
It's doing away with the village, village commercial district, yes.
They're making a business.
In twenty years, I've never had one.
Right.
So in other words, there was two lots in the town of West Warwick on the village
Commercial.
Commercial. He's changing those two lots to village commercial to business.
Which is all around them.
Yes.
Which is all around them. And by the way, I know there was rumor and speculation, there is no active building or
No.
or business trying to go in there or anything like that.
I've spoken with both owners. One is a couple of, it's been living there. Their son was there, just wanted to make sure. And the other one is a rental unit. And I spoke with the owner of the rental unit there. They just want to know it's not going to affect them.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, amending section two, general purposes, section three, definitions, section four, division into districts, section five, use regulations, and section eighteen, power of the town council to establish zoning board review and adopt zoning ordinance of the town of West Warwick zoning code.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Al?
This is the ordinance that, second, the second time we've amended to bring us our zoning ordinance up to date with the two thousand and twenty-four legislation. As I stated the last time I was here, the big change is in the accessible, of the dwelling units, the and we've already had our first one where they, they don't have to go through zoning or anything. They just go to the building office and
So the reason behind this ordinance is basically, which we do yearly, is match what the legislation of Rhode Island does because this, our local zoning codes, the states supersede anyway. So we're just fixing what they changed in the state.
If the council didn't pass it, it'd be our law anyway, because that's what the state says.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Any public comment on this ordinance? Do you have one behind you?
Fogville fifteen Janet Drive. I, I just want to reiterate, this is terrible legislation. This doesn't have any oversight by any of the boards in the town. Anybody can come in here and stick an ADU in their garage. The regulations state from the state, as I verified with planning board council at the meeting last time, one to five people in a one-bedroom unit. I understand we have issues with housing. However, we need to have humane housing. Sticking five people in a one-bedroom with one parking spot, by the way, is going to cause chaos. And you know, unfortunately, we've just heard from the school department how the increase in students in our schools is going. And this is not going to make it any better. And once the unit's there, we're stuck with it. This doesn't prohibit them from going in condominium complexes. In fact, it specifically says that the condo documents cannot restrict them there. So when we get condominium garages being converted into ADUs, we're going to have even more problems. Okay, because I can assure you, nobody who lives in those knows that their neighbor can do that. Apparently, it can be done according to council. Okay, so we voted unfavorable on the planning board because of these things. I understand what they're trying to do. But again, it's going to be the urban ring communities that are stuck with this. Legislators pass it, they don't pay for it. That's the problem. And if I, any of the legislators that voted for this in this community should be seriously looked at because this is going to destroy this community if allowed to stand the way it is. We should not be sticking five people in a one-bedroom unit. And we should not be having no oversight in this town as to, from any of the boards as to what goes in. And it all goes to the state now. So if anybody requests one of these things, the count, the town blocks at it. It, it's not, it's not heard here. It's not an appeal here. It's appeal to the Superior Court. So the towns, any of the cities and towns in the state are now subject to the state to be governed. So we're going from individual rules of cities and towns. And this could affect minimum acreages in other communities. It, it prohibits the town from requesting separate sewer or water tie-ins. We can't request anything other than them get to get a building permit. So I just wanted to make that clear, that this is terrible legislation, in my opinion. And that's all I need to say at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments?
It's legislation, that's all I can say.
That's the unfortunate part, states supersede town. And I, and I don't disagree with you there, Paul. It's, it's
The, the biggest concern I have with the legislation is that it's one size fits all. And I've given you
You've, you've been very vocal on that, yes.
That's, that's
So we need to do some work at the state house and, and making sure that our, the people up there are, are taking care of our interests. But as you say
But there's nothing we can do.
That's correct.
Well, they can change wording just like we do.
No, I'm saying, we here
Well, we, we can reach out and our
Right.
constituents can reach out to our local reps and senators and
Yes.
share this displeasure and
Yes.
working on that. You know, like Paul said, you know, you got five people in a one-bedroom. That doesn't work, you know, a couple, maybe, but two people? But five, I don't
I think we're all in agreement that we want control I think we're all in agreement that we want control to remain local. And this is taking it away from us. I think the only thing that we're doing here is making life a little simpler for those. Um, who have to make decisions because the decisions are taken out of our hands now, so.
On that line, Councilman, I do have to say that this legislation. Is so, the language in it. We just had one came in a week or so ago that I got a request from the building office. Uh, do I grant the permit or does it have to go to zoning? And it. I'd say it took me some time to go through the legislation because I wanted to make what I think is the right decision. I made the decision that. He can issue the building permit, but I'm, I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent confident that.
So Al, let me ask you this. As um, as a body, if we reject this, we say no to this. What is the real effect of that? I know that state law is gonna supersede anything, but is that just gonna gum up the works within town?
If you rejected this and the same, I got the same call next week from the building official, I'd have to give him the same answer. You can issue the building permit, even though the council said you can't.
Right.
Right.
But in terms of what happens locally, how does this gum up the works?
It, it depends on the, the reason I said that I took some time with it. There's some situations where the granting of an accessory dwelling unit does have to get permission. There are other situations where they don't. So being that we're just faced with it, when that came up, I had to go through the legislation. Read it and say, okay, this falls under this section. And then I sent it to Marilyn and said, do you agree with me that this is one that. Uh, Bob has to issue the building permit? She agreed with me, but I, I don't, I have to admit, Mark, I. I'm concerned about everyone that comes before me. Am I gonna make the right decision?
So if you had said no, and the next step would have been, so we would wind up paying attorney's fees in superior court, and it would have been, we would lose?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Take the number of applications that would come in on an annual basis, if you're in court on fifty percent of them, even if you go fifty fifty, if they're in court. You're spending a lot of money needlessly because the courts are gonna interpret the statute from the general assembly's point of view. They don't care about what the intent is of the local city and town councils.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call. Mark?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I vote no. It doesn't do any good, but just.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen amending chapter eleven motor vehicles and traffic, article two operation and adding section fifty-two low speed vehicles as amended.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
This is a low speed vehicle. The chief gave you quite a talk on it. The only change is that Pulaski Street was headed as one of the. Streets that low speed vehicles are not allowed on.
Any questions or comments?
Well, we're kind of in the same situation with this, aren't we? With state law.
Well, the, the, it's state law, but.
But we get to choose where these are.
We get to choose where they.
Yeah. The only thing I would ask is that we all consider that this is a complete list of where we don't want these vehicles.
And I, I, like any other traffic ordinance, uh, at any time that.
Right.
That you feel is an, an area that needs, uh, just give the line a call and we can go from there.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? None, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen amending article seven tobacco dealers license and sales regulations.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
This is a request came from the police department. Our ordinance has the minimum tobacco purchase aged eighteen. This increases it to twenty-one, which is again by state law. And the second change that was made. Was that when we originally passed the ordinance, we had anyone who was selling tobacco. Had to have a license from the town council. The superior court said that. That's not right. State is in charge of tobacco sales. The town council does not have the authority to license. So we changed it from the town council issuing a license to the clerk issuing a business permit. Who kept all the same restrictions and regulations on it. Those are the two changes that were made.
So Al, all that hard work that the West Warwick High School students did a few years back is kind of being.
Went out the window.
Yeah. And, and I, I know, I, I've been to a lot of meetings with those children and most of them are graduated by now.
Right.
But I'm sure.
I, I can tell you that that original ordinance that was drawn, that I worked with those kids, and I can't describe. What an incredible bunch of young people. These were the work they put in, the, the information, the factual information. That they gave me. It was, it was a, a great experience in working with that group that did that. They went out and they had their facts down as to what was going on.
Mrs. Maine and, and the whole group was very involved and they wanted to be involved and, and they stood involved. And I, I remember Zoe Moreau was one of the lead students on that.
Yeah, they were.
You know, again, here we go with other government superseding what we want in our town with tobacco and smoke shops.
Political contributions.
Crazy. Any other comment from the council? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And just cuz of all the work those kids did on voting no.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance authorizing the town of West Warwick to finance the acquisition of public safety, public works and recreation vehicles and equipment by the issuance of not more than two million five hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds and or notes therefore.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Mark, you want?
Kristen's coming too.
Kristen's coming?
Yeah.
Oh, you left the chambers and came back in, eh?
So we are tweaking the funding mechanism for the equipment. We were gonna do an equipment lease, but due to the grant. Um, parameters, we need to just do a general obligation bond instead. We may even get a better rate.
Rates are pretty high right now.
Yeah, but we don't want to jeopardize our one million dollar grant. We don't want to jeopardize our one million dollar grant.
No.
No.
Any questions for Kristen? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Liquor licenses, town council acting as a liquor commission. Request from the Nardolillo Group LLC doing business as Toast and Tap for a class B V liquor license.
Move the license.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? I know the uh, parties are here. If anybody has any questions for them. Again, this is, it, it went from Miss Cranston's diner to Easy Diner. To same parties, but other individuals are involved and they want to keep it open a little longer at night, so until ten P M instead of two P M. So that's why they came before us for their liquor license. Any public comment on the liquor license? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations and good luck.
Request from the Falls Event Center LLC doing business as the Falls Event Center for a class B V liquor license at three Bridle Avenue, units four dash one and four A dash one.
Move the license.
Second.
Move the second. Discussion? I think the parties are here for that matter. If you want to just come up. I know there was some concerns and questions last time, so if you just.
Mr. President, Nicholas Heeman for the Falls Event Center. The concerns had to do largely with fire in that the fire inspection had occurred so long ago. Chief Verone um sent in the fire marshal, uh, and I did talk to both of them today. Uh, they gave us a list of things that they'd like to see. We don't take any issue with any of them. Um, and what we would ask is that you approve the license. Subject to the condition that we meet all of those requirements prior to the license being issued.
And, and we normally.
Right.
Everything is police, fire and tax collectors.
And.
Approval and sewer departments.
Yeah, so they're, they're all final, you know, sort of items. And again, we don't take issue with them. We're happy to do them, but before we can. Make the additional investment, we gotta know whether or not we have a liquor license or we don't.
Chief, do you have any comments to add? I saw you come up, that's why I'm asking.
No, no, I just, you know, we did go out there, um, and. There are like substantial improvements that need to be done. So, you know, they're gonna do them as long as the license isn't gonna be issued until that is done. Okay, that's, that's fine with me, so.
That's on your office, Sam.
Mr. President, just one question the council might be interested in is the timing of these events that are gonna take place in order to comply. Any idea?
When do you think you'd be starting to operate? The date. So their goal would be October first, but if they don't meet these conditions, then obviously they can't pick the license up.
Right, just to, just to have an idea of time.
No, and we get, like I said, we agree. We agree.
Um, did we take no action last time or did we table this?
You continued it.
Okay, so we're good. I just wanted to make sure we didn't table it and then.
All right. And then I, I submitted something I, uh, on Friday.
Yes.
To you folks to just sort of, you know, it's kind of something we use in a lot of businesses that I've worked with. We'll have a sound engineer come in. Test the sound, make sure everything's compliant with the noise ordinance and things like that. And, and we're happy for you to impose that as a condition as well.
And you also in your letter talked about parking, which is a big concern, especially for the neighborhood and that you would have additional detail and or event people there to handle anything.
Security for those types of events that we reference in the letter. And, you know, there's only so much security can do. They can say, hey, please move your car. Please don't park here. Like I said, we'll put some information in our packets that we hand out to, to folks that book an event at the center. Um, that makes it very clear that they're expected to abide by all the rules and regulations and signage related to parking, not block people's driveways. And we did talk with a gentleman outside who lives in the area. I gave him my card. Um, and Peter Rosiello, who was here last time, who is watching on Zoom, but is not here. Um, we gave him all the contact information he might need in order to be able to be in touch with us, so.
Yeah, and I, I spoke to your client today about that. Same individual reached out to me and just had minor concerns, but I think when you bring him over and show him what you're doing and. You know, the rooms that you have in there, give him a tour, I think he can work with you. And, you know, he's one of two houses that are right there. I know there's some condos off to the right. But there's one, I think that's all Duke Street, but there's one house on the left, which, and then there's the blue house straight to the back. You know, they had concerns of, you know, just. Late night hanging out in the parking lot or whatever and, you know, and I, I was assured that that would not.
And, and none of that's in our interest to have going on.
Right. I think another concern was that it might turn into a full-time one A M bar room or whatever. And, you know, that's, that's what.
And as, as we said the last time we were here, and I offered it up for you to make it a condition of the license, that if we change it away from these events oriented.
Comes back.
Operation and were to convert it to a more traditional restaurant or to blend both uses together, we'll come back and, and inform you before we do anything like that.
Yeah, that's good. Any other comment, questions, concerns? Any public comment on this liquor license? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And again, that's gonna be subjected to the compliance of.
Yes.
Yes, as every, every one of them is. Thank you. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing.
Business licenses.
Have a motion to move.
All of them or do you wanna do?
On there.
And do them all at once?
Yeah.
Move the business licenses.
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion?
Well, if I made, I'm sorry.
What is central?
One of them relates to Falls event. So that you piggyback that with what you did in J. So I would take that one out. Do, do two and three together, then on one, just say.
So we'll start, why don't we do the first one? We'll say request for the uh, the Falls Event Center. I'll move that business license.
Second.
Subject to.
And then we would do the same, even though any.
So again, all three of these are subject to.
Yep.
Police, fire inspections, so, and building officials. So I, I'd say we just do all three.
Move the group.
Second, the movement of the group.
Any public comments on these licenses? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. That uh, Falls Event Center has been approved. Christa King's been approved and Sacred Heart Church Raffle's been approved. Have a good night.
Thank you.
New business, approval of the collective bargaining.
Before we move forward with this, uh, can we just take no action on that tonight?
All right, uh, June twenty twenty-four monthly finance report.
Sure, stay up front, Kristen.
Good evening, councilors. Current year tax collections total sixty-six million eight hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents, which is a hundred and one point three eight percent of the budget for current year taxes for fiscal year twenty-four. We've collected all the quarters and trending approximately one point three eight percent higher than expected. Prior year tax collections total eight hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eight cents, which is equal to sixty-seven point one percent of the budgeted amount. As always, this line had been adjusted back in the beginning of the fiscal year by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents for the sixty day rule and accrued back to fiscal year twenty-three. Overall revenues are at a hundred and four point seven six, which is higher than the expected hundred percent. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections and higher than expected building, finance and town clerk revenues. Expenditures are trending nearly as expected at a hundred and four point, hundred and four point oh five percent. This is four point oh five percent of the, above the expected hundred percent. There are a few variables contributing to this. The variables net out to bring us within four point oh five percent of our target. Some examples are as follows, an additional three point nine million in pass-through school state aid. And cost to fix the damage from the January twenty twenty-four flooding. Please note, we are working with FEMA and don't have an exact dollar for reimbursement yet. Therefore, any reimbursement is not factored into our expected revenues above at this time. However, many of the operating depart- departmental budgets and general government are trending at or below the expected hundred percent, including pension expense. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine and operating revenues of seven hundred and forty-one, two hundred and eighty-six. The bank balance as of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four is thirteen million five eighty-eight, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and six cents. We have earned three hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents. As of June thirtieth in interest on our opera funds invested at Central Bank.
Any questions for Chris? Did you have says, you're gonna, you're gonna say something? Any questions for Kristen on that update? Thank you, Kristen. Thank you.
Bateman of taxes in the amount of seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-one cents is requested by the tax collector.
Excuse me, move the resolution.
Second.
Hi, Rose. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
These are old receivables, two thousand eleven through two thousand thirteen. We've been trying to clean up these receivables. So we're doing it slowly. So this is tangibles and these, all of these businesses are out of business.
Yes, they are. Any questions for Rose? I think there's one that's might still be in business, but.
Yeah.
Which one?
Tree service. Lining's.
Um.
He drives by. Might not be at that address.
Yeah.
It might, this might be the truck, who knows?
Oh, okay.
Right.
Cuz I checked with Tony and I did these thoroughly and. They were all, okay.
All the rest that you know they're on. The Shantos ice cream is not there.
Well, that's it for now.
Yeah.
Posting app.
Thank you.
Questions for Rose?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you for keeping our books clean.
Approval of grant for the fire department in the amount of. Approval of grant for the fire department in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and fifty eight dollars for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Move the grant, approval of the grant.
Second.
Move the second, Chief? I know you sent us an in-depth email this weekend. I said, I know you sent us an in-depth email. Thank you for answering all our questions, but if you just wanna go over real quick.
Yeah, so we use a self-contained breathing apparatus on a daily basis. They have a twenty year lifespan. We have about sixty packs that have gone. And or will be going in the next short time. So we put in for a grant to replace forty one of the SCBAs. The numbers that we use, we have. Certain amount of writing positions that were eligible to submit a grant for, we have to subtract out what. What packs actually meet the current standard. So we subtracted those out and the maximum that we could put in for was forty one packs. So this will bring us into the future. Okay, it's a ninety ten split. The total dollar amount is like four hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. For the new forty one SCBAs. Our share of that would be about forty one thousand. We have been planning to buy a few. Like each year, we've been putting money into capital, so we do have money in capital that was designated for SCBA. That we can use for the match for the forty one thousand. But we'll receive about four hundred and twelve thousand from the federal government.
And again, just wanna point out, yes, this, no matter what money we see up here and we approve, especially if it's federal money. It's still taxpayers' money, but on a local level, that's a four hundred and twelve thousand dollar savings on a local level. And these grants, if we don't apply for them to chief, the department heads and whoever, it would go to other communities. So thank you for everything that you're doing and and continuing, keeping expenses down here locally in Westmore. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it?
Discussion action, homeless encampments.
This was put on by.
Yeah, I requested that this item was put on the agenda, mostly because. I think it's by and large the largest problem we have facing us in our town. And I'm hearing from quite a few of the residents in my ward and around town in general. And, you know, aside from that, seeing a lot of social media posts and of course, you don't always. You can't always believe everything you read in the social media post, but generally where there's smoke, there's fire. Sorry, Chief, that's a bad, that's a bad saying. So, you know, I did a little digging on this and. You know, through the experiences that I've had in the short time I've been in the council, this is the problem that keeps coming back up. You know, unfortunately, we're missing two members of the council tonight because I I really wanted to have this discussion when we were all present. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna have it anyway. And there's a large group here. I'm assuming that most of the people in the in the group. Are here because they have feelings one way or the other. First and foremost, I want everybody to know that I am a compassionate person. There's no doubt that there are people who are struggling and I feel for them, just like everybody else does. One of the problems that I have with the encampments is the firsthand knowledge of what happens down in those encampments. And. When I see the pictures of the needles, the trash, the garbage. The feces polluting our our town land and the rivers that run through our town, it breaks my heart. You know, we're up here, we talk a lot about taxes, about money. What are our residents getting for the taxes that they provide the town? What services? I think generally we do our best to provide the best services we can for the taxes we require of everybody. But I don't think anybody should be expected to pay for the cleanup of these sites. And quite honestly, I feel as if. The residents, the police and fire that respond to the issues in the encampments and the homeless themselves are are in danger. So I just, I put together a little something here that I'm just gonna read out. And this is what we know has happened at the encampments really since June. All right, and I'm gonna work backwards. So last week, there was a female from the Manor Drive homeless encampment transported for mental health evaluation. No big deal, right? That happens. Many places, not just homeless encampments. Previous week, domestic assaults, assault investigation at the Riverpoint homeless encampment warrant pending. Backing up a week from there, male charged with felony assault after domestic at the Hay Street homeless encampment. Same week, female from the Junior Street encampment arrested on a Warwick police warrant. Weekending August ninth, disturbance and possible assault at the homeless encampment behind the police range. Nobody wanted to cooperate or press charges. Another item from the same week, male from the homeless encampment behind Project Hand Up arrested. For violation of no contact order. Weekending seven twenty six, assisted West Warwick Fire Department with the Riverbank extraction. Of a female from the homeless encampment on Junior Street. Weekending seven eighteen, particularly busy. Male from the Industrial Lane homeless encampment transported for mental health evaluation. Several encampment residents issued no trespass orders for the private Noons property. Male was in violation of a no conduct, I'm sorry, no contact order at the above encampment and warrant issued. Airsoft pistol turned over for destruction at the East Main Street encampment. Weekending seven eleven, male from the East Main homeless encampment arrested for A D W. With a baseball bat and possession of methamphetamine and crack cocaine. Weekending six twenty one, female assaulted at East Main Street homeless encampment. Declined to press charges and was transported to the hospital with minor injuries. So I took basically this summer, when I looked this stuff up. I didn't need to go any further back, in my opinion, because I think we see what we're dealing with here. And not just we as residents, but our police and fire who put themselves in harm's way every day. This is a very difficult conversation. We seem to have had this conversation more than a dozen times since I've been on the council. With really no action taking place. When we look to neighboring towns and cities like Cranston, they've taken action on their encampments. What that has done, in my opinion, is probably pushed more people towards our town. So the problem is not gonna get any better, it's just gonna get worse. We need to take action, in my opinion. I'm asking the council to take some action. I wanna do something similar as Cranston. And I don't want these encampments to exist on town property. So, Mr. President, that's where I'm at tonight. I know it's. A very popular opinion among some and an extremely unpopular opinion among others. That's where the difficulty lies. But we don't seem to have any other. Solution for this issue, other than to have these people not doing this to our town property.
And Mark, I I think we've had some in-depth discussions here numerous times, and I don't disagree, we've had a lot of discussions. I think the police department's doing the best they can with what they can.
Absolutely.
The, when you talk about the city of Cranston, I'm not sure what they did, because I know they brought it before the council. And they voted down, the mayor wanted one thing and the council said, we're not going down that road. So what are you talking about when it comes to Cranston?
It was my understanding that the mayor had targeted a particular one or two.
Near the school. He he targeted the one encampment near the school to get it away from the school. And he actually stated on the news, he didn't find anybody there, but they did clean it up.
Well, I think we could all take a little field trip if we wanted to and go find a few dozen people.
And I don't disagree. We all know East Main Street has their issues, all the way down to Riverpoint Park.
And I think you you said something that that hits home with many people. When it, when it comes to the distance away from a school or a park or an athletic complex. Being Riverpoint, where we've got four tennis courts, two basketball courts. Five baseball and softball fields, numerous soccer fields. That's where children and families. Recreate and we don't, I'll say, I don't. Want the two to mix. Because there are problems when that happens.
And and I and I know we've had, I've had discussions. Via email with individuals in the town, meaning the police department or whatever, because rumor had it, there was over twenty sex offenders down there. There is four, that last count that I have. And while there's sex offenders in apartments, it's it's doesn't, you know, there's sex offenders in Phoenix in a four-unit apartment. They're all registered. So I just, I just asked if they were registered, are we keeping an eye on the situation? Because that was the concern and the rumors and speculations was there was twenty five. And again, that was on social media. That came from some people in this town hall that there was twenty five sex offenders down there. So I just wanna point out that, you know, we are, you know, just because we're not here discussing it, we are discussing it. Behind the scenes, we are trying to figure it out. It's not the easiest thing to figure out. It's not just a West Warwick problem. It's not just a state of Rhode Island problem. It's a national problem. You're talking about apartments that people are getting. Two, three thousand dollars. And a person making fifteen dollars an hour isn't going to get themselves an apartment for two thousand dollars a month. It is not going to work. Let's face it. So that's why this has happened. It's getting worse. Last count was fifty, the last time it was here was fifty homeless people. Now I'm hearing it's over seventy. It's, it is adding up and it is warmer outside. So winter is probably reduced, but summer, you know, depending on housing in the winter. I mean, again, this is a state issue. We, we, I I said it, the individual that was in charge of this. Up and left his position in the state of Rhode Island. You know, they're in disarray. I had meetings, I know, we were in meetings here. We have people in place who have less than six months experience working for the state on this matter, and they're trying to do their best, but their leader up and left. You know, it's, it's a hard thing to figure out. It's not just West Warwick. And, you know, I'm I'm saving this for the council's discussion right now, so. And, you know, I get it. East Main Street has brought it up to me numerous times. But also, some of those individuals said, if they learned how to behave. If they weren't on their property stealing their electric, if they weren't stealing their propane tanks or their grills or whatever. And they minded their business, they'd probably be less. Less focused on it, but it's because they're leaving those facilities and and disrupting everybody else's neighborhood. And you're right, they're in parks, they're in Horgan School, sitting right behind there, sitting at the fence while. School is going on. You know, it's, it's just not, it's not fair.
So, one of the things that I I failed to mention in my little speech there was that, you know, I'm not an attorney, I don't pretend to be one. But there was a recent decision in the Supreme Court in terms of encampments, giving, from what I understand. And the solicitor can correct me, but it's, it gives communities and municipalities. The autonomy to do what they need to do or want to do with. Encampments, whether it is to break them apart or to allow them or whatever the case might be. So, again, I think, unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Solicitor, we are on. More firm footing than we were, say, three months ago.
Well, that's an opinion because you had local ordinances, state law that was in effect three months ago. That the question is, how do you enforce, again, the no trespass issue that was discussed in detail by this council? And also whether or not, obviously, there are certain members of that society that may have warrants issued for them or maybe. Gonna get arrested for whatever activities they have that you could already address. The question simply is this, if you're going to have an edict from this town council to the police department. Or anyone else that's in public safety as to what you're going to do every single day regarding these issues. You're gonna have to address that on the other end, as the president said, because I'm sure. That the number of events that happen on a daily basis and the overtime you're gonna have to pay is gonna skyrocket. Now, you're gonna have mistakes made that people who think somebody who might be homeless and is not. And they get addressed and there's also, I I would assume there's gonna be pushback from a lot of groups. The American Civil Liberties Union, because you just can't pull over anybody and say, hey, we wanna talk to you because we think you're homeless and you might have been involved. In an infraction last night. So there's a lot of different issues that are here, especially enforcement of your own local ordinances. You also have the issue of the groups that maintain these encampments on private property. Because the private property homeowner is liable for what's going on. So for example, and again, we'll call it whatever location you want. There are fifteen individuals sleeping and doing whatever on private property. That private property is not zoned for that. So you gotta bring them in here and say, listen, either you're gonna put some security out there, which again, I don't know what it is. Now suppose the private property owner decides, well, we're gonna put armed guys out there, security. And next thing you know, three homeless people get shot because of they're doing their laundry in the river. That's those, I mean, that's a. Very much an extravagant type of view of this, but these are the types of things that happen. In order to remove them, you can remove them on one day. You can say, do it like when Saka did, remove everything. Throw it away, light it on fire. These people have no place to go. They're gonna come back one way or the other. They'll move for a couple of weeks or months. Or the other way you can do it is, any piece of town property that you don't want people on, put up the fences. Put up the barbed wire, which you don't want the town looking like that.
No, we don't want that.
It's a, it's, it's, and I I can understand what you, because we had this discussion the last time about the the ballpark and the fields. But at what point do you have? The police in their SWAT uniforms coming in and, because that 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 vision, that visual is not gonna play well. What happens when you have mistakes that occurred during the normal investigation of crimes? So you do have more of a right to handle these, but you still have to do them legally. You just, you just don't have the right to walk in there and say, okay, we're gonna deputize thirty guys, go down there with baseball bats and clean them out.
No, I don't think anybody's looking for that.
No, so Mark, I just want, I just wanna point out, somebody just sent me something clarification on Mayor Hopkins. He went against the council's decision, but he also issued an executive order. Giving the police department the authority to break up homeless encampments. Now, whether or not the police department is actively doing that. Is another whole situation. He he made an executive order.
Okay. So again, I. I feel like we just bat this around over and over and over again, so.
So as much as, as much as everything else we've talked about, how we want some autonomy, in my mind, this is a state issue and we need state help. And I don't know, as David said, we've sort of had some changes in in leadership in that regard. I know, Mark, you have some meetings coming up too, and we're talking about getting. Other meetings together as we, you know, they've sort of died down during the, during the summer months.
So I, I can respect what you're saying, but to be honest with you, the state's inability to get their act together is not our concern. I don't, I don't care about their leadership changes, because that's their problem. And now I think it's our turn to, now I think it's our turn to take care of ourselves while we still can.
And I think that we need to have input from our our law enforcement, which. And as, and if we're gonna send in our police department. Potentially fire department and DPW workers, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that because we put them at risk.
Well, we're doing that every day.
To move them out, it's a very different to to.
I'm not saying we roll in there one day and say, you're all out. We have plenty of people that walk in there and and deal with these folks every day. We give them a little bit of time and say, on this date. This is what's gonna happen.
And where are they gonna go?
Not my concern.
Well, it should be, because it's not gonna, if they're Westmore residence, they're gonna find another place in Westmore.
Are they Westmore residents?
I think a lot of them are.
A lot? You can't quantify it.
Well, I I think there are some numbers, so, again, if we don't have a place for them to go, which is why, again, we need.
So I think this leaves us at an impasse, because I'm looking for action. I don't know that any action's gonna take place tonight, especially since we're missing two members.
I I think that's unfortunate too, yes.
But that's where I stand. Again. I'm not gonna pretend that my ward deals with this issue as much as the other wards. My ward deals with this issue as much as the other wards, right? But I do get, I do get a lot of calls from a lot of people inside my ward and outside my ward. As I'm sure you all do. That this is a problem, and every time somebody goes on social media and whips up the crowd, so to speak. It's just another day that we're dealing with this and. You know. I think Dave said a minute ago, the weather's gonna get colder. And it, it's gonna become. Even more difficult to deal with. So.
And as, and as I always said, and I'm very compassionate also. But I want it to be done in a humane way, oh, you know, I don't want to see somebody go in there. And the police department just start pushing people, and I don't think our police department would ever do that.
I don't think they would, I don't want to see tents flipped upside down, none of that.
Unfortunately, when altercations happen. Then. Stuff like that does attend, intend to happen. And, you know. I, I know. It started where, okay, they were on Pulaski Street, they were pushed out of Pulaski, they were down towards. Um, the playground in, in Jay's Ward, and then pushed out of there and it just kept multiplying. And because less than a year ago, we had one to two people on the embankment on. Uh, East Main. And I, I was asked politely, hey, this guy's looking, we're trying to figure it out, so on and so forth. But then now we have over fifty, so.
Yeah.
It, it's multiplied drastically.
It's gonna keep multiplying.
And I don't think the people who are. And the people who are living on East Main Street, a lot of them are longtime residents. Longtime taxpayers and they should not have to deal with this on a daily basis. My kid should be able to sit on my deck suntanned without being harassed, my, my kid should be able to go on my yacht and not worry about somebody. Saying things to him. Um, people should be able to go on the bike path and I haven't heard of too much harassment going on, but the cleanliness is, in certain areas is not. Respectful, we've all seen pictures of what they leave these campsites like. It's not camping, it's pigpenning.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, sometimes it takes a dumpster to get out of there, we've supplied a dumpster. To East Main already and cleaned up, asked people to help us clean it out. I know there's advocates and groups that go down there and try to help clean up, but. You know, I, I made it clear, Jay La Croix sends me a picture, he hasn't sent me one in the past couple of weeks, but. He was sending pictures every morning of the garbage that was on his property every single day. And I don't blame anybody for not liking this, I, I, I mean, it's, it's a hard thing to deal with. Because you want to have compassion for the individual, but you also have people who live here, pay taxes here and. It's just not fair to them, and how, how do you deal with it on a reasonable level? Do I want to put an executive order in and make the police department go and move everybody tomorrow? Absolutely not. But if you want to put a timeframe to it. You know, November first, I, I'm good with thirty, sixty, ninety day, but. Just, just remember, they might move out of there, but we don't know where they're gonna move to.
Well.
If they find a friend, and I've found, and I brought this up, it happened on South Street. Found a friend, I'm gonna go move in their backyard, it's on their property and there's nothing we can say, there's no camping ordinance. There's, they can camp on somebody's private property, you know, if they get the permission. I know we've worked, there was an individual, an individual that offered maybe renting out his property to one of. The groups here and saying, okay, maybe we'll just bring everybody here, we know where they are, we know what's going on, we can keep an eye on.
Well, I think. Those last couple of things you just mentioned are, are far better alternatives than what we have right now.
I, I wouldn't disagree, and those are the kind of things that we talked about all last, beginning last September. Finding a place where we could have control, if you will, of, of the group, so they're not on a riverbank. Because that's where they're going to tend to be, because the water's.
Well, I mean more in terms of what they said regarding, uh, individual property owners giving permission. Well, then that, that ties them into the situation. As, as Tim said. So. They're, for lack of a better term, on the hook for that, they have responsibility over what happens on their property, and if they approve of it, they approve of it. But when it comes to town land and we have taxpayers who we ask year after year. To give and give and give a little bit more until it hurts. I don't think this is what they had in mind when. When they, they're paying that tax bill. And it's more than just that, it is the police department's safety, it is the fire department's safety. And, you know, I, I'm not saying that we go in there and we flip tents upside down and kick their things everywhere, no. Will there be some tense moments? I'm sure there would, if we went down that path, but. You know, it, it's just going to build and build and build until we could no longer get control of it. There's nothing on the horizon that says we have control of this until we take action. It's not gonna go away, it's just gonna keep multiplying. In my opinion.
Yeah, if, if the numbers are right, we're up forty percent.
And I would bet that's even low.
So up, off the last report, up forty percent.
Right, I think we're mid fifties and you mentioned seventy out. I, I'd be surprised if we were at seventy. But. That's all I have to say about that. I don't know.
Well, maybe there has to be an active group working on it on a regular basis. I mean. Of the interested parties, whether it's the police chief and the town manager and, and maybe there has to be a group that, that. Is charged with. Come up with a solution, because I don't think the solution is just scooping everybody up and telling them you're out, because they're just gonna go somewhere else. We have to provide, provide some solution.
But as long as that's not town land.
Well, I did. It will be.
Then we scoop them up and move them again.
And we're using resources, taxpayer dollars to do all that. So.
What they've paid for.
Well, the action is if you want to make a motion, you can make a motion or. You know, or do you want to wait for a full council or?
Yeah, you know what, um. What's the process for this? Table it to the next one or?
You can put it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda?
There's no, there's no resolution, there's no.
I think what we'll do is, um. Only because I think it is only right to have the other two members here for their input. I think I'll just, I'll hold on to this for now and I'll put it on the agenda again. And then we can, we can go down that road again.
Tyler, can you put that on the September seventeenth agenda?
Can I also make a suggestion that you might want to think about putting a subcommittee together? Of a couple of members of the council. Police, fire, emergency, schools, to determine what's the next step?
I think I just said that.
But that way, because you can figure out the procedure, because again. No matter what you think about this group of people, you're gonna have to provide them with legal notice, even though they already have it that they're trespassing. But if you want to remove them by a date certain, you're gonna have to give them notice, and that notice. Probably is not gonna be by letter, correspondence, or email or text, it's probably gonna have to be.
Word of mouth.
That's gonna be.
Direct.
Directly, it's gonna be on the property itself that you're giving notice that as of October first, November first, as of. Twelve P M noon, you'll be off this property, and if you don't move voluntarily, the town of West Warwick will assist you. But that's when all the fun starts, because you have a controllable element that can turn very quickly. Because with their first question is gonna be, where are we gonna go? And then if West Warwick does remove them, I mean, do you foresee putting everybody on a bus à la Wind Socket and then moving them? To the Connecticut line and then leaving them there?
Again, I don't, I didn't.
That's, I mean, those are the types of things your subcommittee could get into and, you know.
All right, well, we'll, we'll save this for the next council meeting, you can speak at public comment. Any questions or concerns you have on this, we're coming right, in, we'll be at public comment in less than ten minutes, hopefully, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Discussion action, thirty Payon Street.
Councilman Luchardi put this on the agenda, um, he was just looking for an update on. Um, payment status, if any, from Child Inc. after, I know they were there for a little over a year. Almost, actually a little longer than that now, almost two years, um. Where we were going through their, Tim, when did their contract expire again, was it a year and a half ago?
Twenty-three.
April.
Twenty-three.
April twenty-three, so it was a little over a year and a few months, but he was looking for, you know, I know we talked about. Maybe trying to collect the rent or whatever from them, although they had a, they're, in their contract, it was a dollar a year for thirty years. Um, we did go into extensive negotiations with them. Um, but they ultimately decided that they were going to leave the town of West Warwick. Um, and I think whatever they had there for students went to either Warwick Coventry and whatever locations they had, so. I know we took a tour, I know there's an open, uh. Invitation to come out and take a look at the building and we did a walkthrough, we walked through actually with. The. Techton and, uh, the school department, us, the town, Mary Beth, myself, Mark. Building official, fire, uh, fire department. I don't think. DPW was there, but, uh, we all took a tour of the building, make sure it was in what shape it should be in. Um, they left a little bit behind, but minus stuff. So now it's a vacant building. So that's what we have to discuss, um. But I know Jay was looking for an update on payments, so if you wanted.
So, just to recap what you started off with, their, their lease expired and they did ask to negotiate new terms and, and made. Some initial offers which were rejected. Um, we engaged in further negotiations and as you'll probably all recall, um, communication was a challenge. Eventually. Um, those negotiations broke down, they were not interested in our terms and sought to. And told us that they were going to vacate, just prior to that, we had come up with figures on. What we were gonna offer as a sale price and as a, a monthly rent or, or lease. Um, which they never agreed to, obviously have since vacated. Um, you know, speaking with the solicitor, is there a method to go? To, in litigation, to seek that money that they never agreed to, there's probably a path. However, in my opinion, it's. For that amount of money, it's not worth going down that path. Especially now that we've assumed the property back, took custody of it. Initially, when that initial trans, transaction happened back in nineteen ninety-three, I think. It was just land. They paid for and erected and maintained that building. Somebody other than the town of West Warwick paid, we have now assumed that asset. Um, and that, obviously, like you just mentioned, it's under consideration for school department use, it can be under consideration for town use. Um, and then other than that, we can go and, and look to see if we want to lease it or sell it to a private entity. With the appropriate process. So in my opinion, for that, the amount of effort and litigation cost to go after. The rent for that year. Isn't worth the legal fees to do it. It's knowing that now we have assumed that, that asset.
And, and that rent, just to make it clear, would probably be under forty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
I think we talked about thirty-seven and change.
Yes, so to, to go after, and, and again, to go after a company for thirty-seven thousand dollars. End up in court for a few years, probably cost us more, so it's. We have the asset, I know I've had two individuals who've reached out to me, I know I've, I told them to reach out to you. Um, one was a daycare, one was another type of schooling. Um, they were looking at bringing from other communities into our community. And so we need to decide as a council and as a town manager, what we're gonna do with that property. If it does go up for sale, you know, we would have to put that before the taxpayers, that would go on a ballot for a vote. If we put it up for lease, then that's just revenue for the town. So we have to look at our options and see what's out there and see what's best for the community, is there another daycare? Uh, daycare was very successful there for thirty years, let's face it, it was very. Convenient for a lot of families in that area and a little bit outside that area, you know, Coventry and West Warwick, you know, the Fairview Ave area. And down, you know, it's, um. You know, it, it is definitely, uh, D C Y F was very involved there, because they have a lot, a lot of kids that were in that. Situation, so again, Child Inc. was an asset to the community. Don't, don't get me wrong, uh, a dollar a year. I think it was a great deal for them and a great deal for the town for the first thirty years, you know. Um, I know. You know, we didn't get too public about it, because I think the rent was very fair, I mean, we argued here from ten thousand a month to three thousand a month. And, you know, we offered them different rates. And, and I think the last one was thirty-five hundred dollars a month or whatever. And. That didn't come to fruition, so they left, they were not happy, they did offer a thou, a dollar a month or a dollar a year again, and. We couldn't do that, it's not fair to the taxpayer, um, especially having thirty years of, of a daycare and. Seeing, I mean, their finances are public, you know, they, they definitely, uh, all their finances were very public, so we were able to see salaries and whatever else. So, you know, it was definitely, uh, a situation where the town could now maybe utilize it for something else. You know, again, we looked at it for schooling, you know, do we go, you know, pre-K? You know, there's a lot of things that are still open, but we as a council need to hurry up and decide, winter is coming, we will be paying to heat that building. We don't want any, you know, water pipe burst or anything like that, and I know we're maintaining it now, Fox and Rec is cutting the grass, we're whacking, doing all that, so. We're trying to keep it.
As part of the school building committee, um, Techton is looking to see if there's any value to be used as school. So until that process is, is finished, we'd be probably. You know, wise to, to, to stand down and, and see what they have to say, it may be that it's not, but to Mark's point. Um, I think the assessed value, and please correct me, is somewhere in the million three. Somewhere in the million three, million four.
Probably ten now.
So we have an asset that we now have, that we did not have before, that we did not pay to put up. Not that I don't want to give you any money, Mr. Solicitor, but paying the solicitor to go after thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollars just doesn't make sense. I don't think, given the fact that we do have that asset.
Just to clarify too, the land is, was valued at two hundred and thirty thousand, I think.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, but with the building, it's valued at one point three million, so.
Right.
We ended up with a one point one million dollar asset and to go chase forty thousand dollars. Which is probably not worth it. Any other questions or comments on that? Hopefully Jay can watch this tomorrow and get his answers, and I'll give him a call tonight or tomorrow.
He said he would.
Request from Nat, uh, Narragansett Electric for relocation of full location on Brookside Avenue.
We want the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Artic gazebo update.
Chief, I know you sent us an update, um, you just want to come up and give an update on the gazebo itself?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
I, I sent the, uh, council. An email after the last town council meeting, which I believe was the thirteenth, so the email came out on the fourteenth. Uh, just about the police response to the gazebo. Um, that was, was spoken about during public comment. Uh, my email basically breaks down since July first, so this would be from July first to August, uh, fourteenth. We had a hundred and fifty-one officer-initiated security checks, in addition to the hundreds of other times officers and other police personnel check it when driving by. Without actually creating an incident screen. Two incidents in which intoxicated subject was transported, uh, for detox by rescue. One municipal court summons issued for smoking. One unfounded animal control complaint, uh, it was a reported, there was a loose dog, the dog was actually on a leash. One disorderly conduct complaint investigated, which lacked probable cause for an arrest. Uh, one report of drug use ongoing, no drugs or paraphernalia were located by the officers. Two arrests for disorderly conduct. One arrest for violation of a no contact order. One arrest for violation of a no contact order and drug possession, uh, the subject had crystal methamphetamine located in their pocket, uh, that was. Located during the, uh, the search incident to the initial arrest. We obviously continue to be a high visibility president, uh, presence at the gazebo. I also took the liberty to run some more numbers, um, and, and some of the numbers are gonna overlap, because this, these numbers. Are from August first to September first, so just thirty days in, in duration. Uh, in those thirty days, we had one hundred and sixteen officer-initiated security checks. Two detox transports, again, we assisted the fire department as they transported by rescue. And we had eight total arrests, and those consist of two males for disorderly conduct, four males on a court, on court warrants. One male for domestic simple assault and domestic disorderly conduct, and one male for disorderly conduct and resisting arrest. As well as, uh, two individuals, actually, one individual was cited twice for possession of open container of alcohol.
So, we're doing our due diligence, we're continuing and trying to keep it organized and clean there and. Just out of curiosity, I don't know if you would be able to answer this, but how many have homes and how many were homeless?
Um, I, if you give me one second, I can give you a little information. Um, I, if you give me one second, I can give you a little information. And again, these, they're not concrete. It's, it's, it's what the, what the subjects list as their residents, uh, when they're being booked. So, um, of the, of the arrests that we had, one indicated homeless, one indicated homeless, another indicated homeless, so that's three, four, five, five of the eight indicated that they were homeless.
Okay. Just wondering, putting those numbers together. Um, no, thank you to you and your department, I know you're trying your best out there. I know that's the gazebo and I, you know, I've, I've getting pitches all week long from different encampments, Main Street with nips, you know, uh, needles, you name it, even right here at Club Front Neck on the stairs. I mean, we got, I know we're, we're trying to keep them out of the gazebo, but they're also spreading all the way down the street, all the way to Phoenix. So, you know, we have, we, it, it, it is getting tough. And, you know, we've had people sleeping on lawns in front of Cumberland Farms. It's, you know, it's just, yeah. Thank you for, you and your department trying to keep it organized over there. Is there, there's been no damage of the property, correct?
Knock on wood, none that I know of, and, and, and I will, I guess, give a shout out to, uh, Jeff Caldwell and his crew. Uh, I, I come in early in the morning, six-thirty, twenty minutes of seven, and, and anytime there's any kind of litter or anything, when I go for a walk or a ride by nine, nine-thirty, place is cleaned up spotless, so they're, they're out there as well. And, and I think the, you know, the broken windows theory really kinda, um, you know, applies there. You know, keep it clean, keep a visible presence, keeping invisible presence sometimes as well, and it, and it helps to deter, you know, people from, you know, committing crimes, vandalizing the place and, and, and doing things that, that, you know, are upsetting to the general public.
Thank you, Chief.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board of Review, appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Board of Review, appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax Assessment Board of Review, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School Building Committee, Tree Warden, Recreation Committee, and West Warwick Two Hundred and Fiftieth Commission, public forum.
Public comment? Yes, on anything? The council may or may not respond?
Maybe they will, maybe they won't, maybe they don't. Derek Reese, Two Hundred F. First of all, the daycare building that's empty, any money is positive money for the town. And in my opinion, we have forty thousand dollars worth of solicitor money owed to us. Documentations exist in the war room. And I think we should utilize forty thousand that was used to defend foreign properties back in the day. That's number one. Number two, the homeless thing. River Point Playground is a place for families and children to play, is it not?
Absolutely.
If you go online, you Google the radius for marijuana grow, is bigger than the radius of what's going on at Horgan School. So within a mile radius, you can't grow marijuana at Horgan School. But within thirty feet of the building, you can shoot up on heroin. Does that make sense? Makes no sense. For you to sit here and tell Mark Dennison, or Councilman Dennison, I don't know what to do, I don't know, take action. The people of this town elected you to do something. And that something needs to happen now. Executive order, whatever, we, we paid a salary to the town manager for public safety. In my opinion, public safety is in jeopardy. Let him give the executive order, takes you off the table. You've got the bike path. I got a thirteen-year-old starting to ride a bike, cause dad's encouraging him to go out. He wants to use the bike path to stay safe. I told him, don't go on it. I don't want my son subject to what's going on on the bike path, and I'll be glad to go on that field trip with you because it's, it's disgusting. This is the town that I grew up in, this is the town that I'm living in. I'm gonna probably sell the house and we're gonna probably stay in this town. And I will stand here and fight every goddamn meeting until you figure this out. I just put up my business, brand-new building. At five-thirty in the morning, I can see fire burning in the woods. What happens when the camouflage falls off the trees? We see it all. River Point Park. The town invested money in a riverwalk around the park, did they not? Yes, we did. Cleared it, put in benches, put in mulch. They can't even enjoy it. But you don't wanna do nothing about it, because you're afraid of what? Media? Who cares?
I don't think anybody said that.
Social services, I don't care. But then the, then the question is, where do they go? I don't care where they go. Keep pushing them out. They come back, push them out, they come back, push them out. Eventually, they get tired of being pushed out. And I'm gonna tell you that more than fifty percent of this crowd and people watching have had enough. When I saw the social media post about Horgan School, David, you had kids. When they were at that age at Horgan School, would you want them to pick that needle up? Do you think every needle's getting picked up every morning? What would happen if just your kid, God forbid, gets some kind of whatever from that needle? Would you be standing at this podium?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm trying to prevent it because the town's on the hook if something happens. Right? Our policy doesn't cover it as far as the town goes, your policy. Your insurance policy doesn't cover problems, injury to a, to a child, civilian, does it? What happens if something happens down there? I don't know, somebody kills somebody. Who's on the hook? It happened on town property, not private property. Private property's on the hook for themselves. We as the taxpayers on the hook for something that happens down there. I think tonight, it was brought up. The next meeting comes, you're gonna have a full house. I wanna see a vote to kick them out of there, one by one. If the police department can't handle it, they can pick up the phone and call state agencies. Okay? When they're chasing people, I got it on video, I sent it to David. They're running through my properties.
That wasn't a homeless person they were chasing.
It's happened before with the homeless people, okay?
That video you sent, Derek, be factual here, okay? Don't take a person who fled from their car through your property as the homeless, okay?
It's happened, it's happened, it's happened since then.
But again, don't, when you sit there and tell me the video you sent me, that was not a homeless person.
But since then, it's happened, okay? Cause I can show you video footage at two o'clock in the morning of cruisers on my neighbor's property looking for somebody. Now he's gonna put his fence back up. Why? Cause he doesn't need the baloney. Okay? People can tell me, oh, we moved them out of that side of the river. Bullshit. Sorry. Five-thirty morning, there's fire glowing in the woods. And I told you what's gonna happen if them woods burned down.
On which side of the property? On your side?
Our side. You just-
Because I, I know personally, having a conversation with Rick Noons, he filed a complaint and had him removed from his side of the property.
They're in between Rick and Jared.
And whose property is it?
I don't know, well, that property between, I don't know if Max owns to the river, which is our neighbor. I'm not sure if, or who owns the river.
And that's something you gotta find out.
Beyond the fence line.
Property owner, if it's private property on that side, if Max owns that, he has to call and file a complaint and have him removed.
All right.
Just like Rick Noons did.
We'll do that. But at the end of the day, it's about the town. It's about the kids. It's about the families, and right now, they can't enjoy that park that the town, the families and the taxpayers paid for. So move them out. That's all I gotta say.
I don't think anybody has ever said we don't wanna do something, come on up. I think it's a, let's make sure we have a solid plan on how- with all the people.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Donna Marsalunas. I live across from Crompton Vets. And I personally have been spearheading an effort to do something about this issue for eight years, the entire time that I have lived across from Crompton Vets. I am a renter, but I take very good care of the property. I love my neighborhood, I have great neighbors. The, the community bond in that area is quite strong. We look out for each other. We have to look out for each other because on a daily basis, the things that we deal with, the things that we see are absolutely disgusting, okay? I am right in front of the park. To my right is Maisy Quinn. And, and the football players right now are down there playing football. Yet, on a daily basis, they are coming out of the woods. The gentleman who was living to the right had been accused and kicked out of many of the other encampments for raping, supposedly, let's let that up in the air since we're dealing in facts. But he has been accused by women in other encampments of date raping them. The arguments that they have, the fights that they have, when one does the other one's drugs, they're horrendous. We wake up to them at three in the morning, four in the morning. You can go out from anywhere to six to eight in the morning, they'll come up out of the woods. Lately, it has been much better. I have been very grateful to the West Warwick Police Department for their vigilance in our neighborhood. They have made us feel like we matter, like we have not felt before, okay? I am a transplant from Western Coventry. I never had to deal with this issue before, I had a hundred-foot driveway. So, um, it's all new to me, and I obviously have not handled it the best way. I often have ran out in my pajamas yelling at some of these people. I cannot tell you how upsetting it is to watch your husband hobble to work every day to try to provide for you and feel totally helpless, not being able to do anything about the surroundings that you have to see every day. My neighbor had to get a pickup wand that you pick trash up with, to pick the condoms, little balls of toilet paper with urine and feces on them, lined up by the trucks that are stored in the corner, um, that, uh, the Steelers football are using for temporary, eh, when you, ever you put anything in that corner, it is a magnet for, let's dip behind the trucks. If I could add a nickel for every time someone urinated behind there, I would probably be a rich woman and move out of that neighborhood. I don't want to, um, blame anybody, I'm not here to blame anybody. I am an activist, I, uh, worked in the cannabis arena for fifteen years. And I know for a fact that one of the things like that previous gentleman said, you cannot open a dispensary within five hundred feet of a school. Uh, Maisy Quinn is right there, and you had someone living on the grounds that was accused of rape and is a psychotic drunk. This, this man has screamed at me things that I just can't even repeat. He's come up out of the woods with no shoes on, no shirt on, his pants falling down, belligerently screaming, you know, to the neighbors, um, you know, you can't do anything about me, et cetera. I have PTSD living where I live. I plant flowers, I put Buddhas, I tried to work really hard on my, my, my peacefulness. Um, this summer, I lost my husband. And on the day that I lost my husband and we had to take him off the life support, I was getting yelled at while my daughter, who was visiting from New Hampshire, and I was sitting on my front lawn, trying to have a peaceful moment. I want you all to look at the face of the people who have to endure this. It's indignified for us. I often hear you speak about their dignity. My dignity is inside my house. The second I walk out of it, almost daily, I lose it by what I am encountering. So, I have been working with Jason Lachado for years. I have called the police on the regular. There are some fantastic young officers, some of which who grew up in this town and take great pride and really wanna be part of the solution, not part of the problem. They have empathy, we all have empathy. But for God's sakes, not all these people are just down on their luck and miss their last rent. These people are habitual psychotic alcoholics who are using methamphetamines on a regular basis, breaking laws to get their next drug. And we are living with the hell that they leave in their tra- in their trail. And you can pussyfoot around it all you want, but it took me eight years to get this agenda in front of this, this body and to be heard. And, and, and trust me, I have a big mouth, everybody in town has heard me. So, I just wanted to put a face to that and let you know. I'm sorry that these people are struggling, but if you walked up to many of them and said, I have a place for you to live, but you cannot do drugs, you cannot do alcohol, you need to clean, clean up your act, they don't want it. They have chosen this lifestyle because it suits their needs. And if that's the case, fine, but not on a playground, not in a school. There is not a day I don't go, but, don't, don't not worry about some child picking up fentanyl. And it has been beyond me how parents let their children play football in the field when fifty foot to the left, there is a gentleman in there who has all summer had drug, people delivering drugs, coming and going, cars back up into there. He's been living there for months and months and months. They have fires, the, the fire chief has come down, he knows that they've had fires here and there. And, and they're literally right there, right at the edge of the field where children are playing, where the cheerleaders are clapping. So if you're gonna discuss this issue, also get out of your car, walk and see some of these places. See the way they are, are living and see what other people have to deal with. And, and I, if you want to have committees, I would happily, happily sign my name up to be part of the, the solution, not the problem. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Alan Palazzo, Five Robin Lane, West Warwick. And I haven't been at meetings in a while. The last one I was, was right after the Supreme Court decision, Grants Pass versus Johnson. And I brought that up to you, that you could do something to it. I also advised you that maybe you should, it's beyond West Warwick. Maybe you should contact Peter Nirona and get him involved to solve it. It's been sixty days. Has this council, you're not, you don't have to answer it, has this council reached out to the State Attorney General regarding this problem? That's what I expected, okay? I just wanted to point that out. I mean, it's ridiculous what is happening. Sixty days from that decision, you're now talking, uh, maybe it's gonna get cold in November? We're gonna get six months into this? We won Desert Storm from the shield to the storm in less than six months. And you can't get the state to react? We have representatives, we have a great police department and a fire department. And I raised the issue when I raised Grants Pass. The Supreme Court finally ruled that it was a public safety and fire issue. That's where the communities could take action. Obviously, you're not doing it. And, and you know, oh, we have to worry about this. This woman's testimony tonight was heart-wrenching, okay? I grew up in this town, as did you. You should not allow them to have to live under these conditions. That's not what this country is about. And, oh, it's beyond West Warwick, it's beyond the state, it's the country. Well, whose fault is that? At least fix the problem in West Warwick, fix the problem in Rhode Island, okay? I didn't spend twenty-three years so people, in the Navy, so people have to live in fear in their own community. When I read the, the issue about syringes, and I'm not sure if it's true, where either the custodians or the teachers have to go out and do a FOD walk down to get rid of the needles before school starts, are you freaking kidding me? And I'm not gonna be polite anymore, cause I've had it. They need action, you need to do something about it. And with that said, I'm gonna leave on a good note because we all know about the Washington Bridge problem. And I wanted to take a picture of West Warwick's own bridge problem. People had complained about Green Bush Road, and the DPW did a fantastic job. If people haven't driven over the new bridge there, I advise them to do it. Kudos to Jeff Caldwell and the DPW, and that's my positive stroke for tonight.
Now, if we can just get FEMA to pay for it, it'd be great.
That's your money?
Realize that.
I've read where some of these groups get upwards of ten thousand dollars to clean up the disaster areas. That is our property, you know, you raised the, made the issue of Child Inc. That's the tax assessors, one point three, as Mr. Goslin pointed out. That is federal money, that is your money. Thank you.
Barbara T. Back, Gendron Street?
Just pull that down to you, Barbara.
There you go. Okay, Barbara T. Back.
Okay, Barbara T. Back, Gendron Street, Fanatic. Just a quick comment. I liked everything that Mr. Dennison had to say. And one thing that I wanted to say, he keeps coming up with everyone that comes up here. I don't know if you remember, but it was probably 10 years ago, and there was an incident of an encampment right off Brookside, and a gentleman died in a fire there. And as everything's been discussed, being discussed tonight, I'm thinking, you know, how do you get rid of it now? We've got Supreme Court saying you can move the encampments and stuff. What did they do that it was a serious encampment there? And just in our office, we had customers that lived in high-rise and how they were terrified. If they opened the door, these people would come in, and there was all kinds of bad things going on. And then that fire happened, somebody died, and they cleaned that encampment right out. How did they do that? What did they do?
That was private property.
You know?
That was on somebody's private property.
It wasn't on the bike path. It was along the bike path.
It was along the bike path, private property.
I wondered if it was on that property. But it's good to think in terms of all, everything we've heard of all the troubles and so forth. Winter is not frost, no. And yes, they're going to be making fires. We leave the encampments, we're opening up, because there's much, much larger encampments, a lot more people. We could have something like that happen again. And so that's something for us to think about when it comes to getting the encampments out, you know, because of the fires.
Hello, Council. This is a completely different topic, so do with it what you will. I'm here this evening to request that the Council approve play streets. My name is Daisy Egan. I live on Parker Street. Play streets are temporary street closures that provide communal space for residents to congregate, especially children. Cities and towns all over the world have successfully implemented play streets with a lot of success. I grew up in Brooklyn, New York in the 80s. We were a working-class neighborhood, people from all walks of life. In the warmer months, all the kids on our block would come out and play on the street, usually without adult supervision. We lived on a one-way street with parked cars lining both sides. When a car came up the street, we'd all yell, "Car, clear the street." And when the car passed, we'd resume our play. This was in the days before cell phones and SUVs. In the years since, the tradition has disappeared, and now it's hard to imagine a parent letting their child play in the street unattended, if at all. We've all heard the stories of people calling police because children are playing outside, seemingly without supervision. And now, when I sit on my porch for an hour, I can easily clock at least half a dozen cars coming barreling down the street above the speed limit and often looking down at their phones. As a result, our kids are becoming increasingly isolated and drawn to screens. We have lived at our house in West Warwick for two years and have not met a single other child on the block. If we told our 11-year-old to go out and play, there would be very little for him to do. Even if he wanted to stick to the sidewalks, our street is largely devoid of sidewalks. But I believe that introducing play streets could change that, and the evidence does support this. Los Angeles has introduced play streets with a lot of success, typically for one day for four to six hours. It can be regularly scheduled. The scheduled closures help residents without easy access to parks have a safe neighborhood place to play and socialize. In Portland, play streets aim to provide safe pop-up community hubs for all ages for socialization, play, and physical activity. San Francisco has operated a play streets program since 2017. Philadelphia has been operating their program for over 50 years. New York City is also exploring similar initiatives. Studies show that active play and physical activity promotes health, helps prevent childhood obesity, helps build healthy bones and muscles, reduces stress and anxiety, and increases self-esteem, which are, by the way, all things that help prevent homelessness in the future. Street closures can be used for a diverse range of events, general play, block parties, community events, cookouts, et cetera. Outdoor play improves the health and well-being of children through exercise and free play and also helps promote independence, social skills, as well as physical and practical skills. I also have all of this printed out. I only made one copy because I'm running out of ink, but I can email it to you. There's no inherent need for any government funding for this program. The only things needed are the permits to close off the streets as per sections 16-1 and 16-4 of the Code of Ordinances, as well as appropriate signage. The residents can determine whether they want to get local businesses involved to donate equipment, but more likely residents will bring whatever equipment themselves. After all, kids really only need a ball and a bat to get a game of stickball going. I believe, and the evidence is showing, that the establishment of play streets can contribute to creating safe recreational spaces and fostering community engagement. Thank you for your attention and consideration, and I look forward to any feedback and to working together to make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy, I know you and I talked about a month ago.
Yes.
We went back and forth, and I know I reached out to the town manager, and he was looking at other options and seeing like what you brought up to us with other communities and the actual cost. And we also have to look at the trust with the insurance and so on and so forth. So I know we're still working on that, and so be more happy to sit down and talk to you further about it.
Great, I'd love that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
My name's Joseph Simis. I live at 35 Lockwood Street, West Warwick. I have called the police department, and they went right out to the gazebo multiple times. And I'm the one that sent Dave the pictures of the club front net. One question I want to ask you, how much did you pay to clean that gazebo up? From the town?
I don't have.
Throw a mo.
I don't have a dollar, Mo Muck. I don't know if you do. I know Jeff, it was labor. It was more labor.
But they're going for something. So why don't we put a fence around there? If they do that at River Point, they lock the fence because they don't want anybody to rip out on the field and do damage. And that's something to consider. And then a lot of these homeless people won't be in Attic. And maybe they come from the 13, will go on to 19, a different part of town. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Garrett Hunter. I'm at Patrick Quinn Drive. This is actually my very first time at a public comment, but I felt passionately about today's subject when I saw the agenda specifically to try to address the homeless issue. It really is a human problem that we have, but I have young children, and I'm very concerned with them just walking the streets, et cetera. And I urge us to have some action. I think inaction is actually a strong message that we're sending to the community and that if we don't do something and then do something soon, the problem will become bigger for all of us to have to address. I hear the concerns from obviously the people here. They're passionate about the subject as well. I love the idea about the community, the committee, but I also urge us to consider other actions such as turning off the power at Horgan School for the outside. So there is an opportunity for them to plug in and jack up and get to the internet, the same for the gazebo. It's those ideas, while they take man-hours, are impediments to ease of use for certain things that would drive them into the community. And I think those are our problems. The easier we make it, the more likely they are to take advantage. I agree that we need to help in some way, shape, or form. I don't say that we just go in and throw out tents. We give notice in some way, and we are consistent with that action. But doing nothing, in my mind, is also an action on our part. So we have to do something. So I urge us deeply, because I don't want my children walking the streets. I don't want my twins walking to River Point, going down to Diggy's. They're not allowed to do that, and that's a shame. I grew up in the community. I never had concerns about that as a child, but I question whether my children are allowed to do that, even at such an advanced technological age where I can keep real good track on them. I can't account for those scenarios. So as a mom, I urge us to really, at the next meeting, have an actionable item that allows us to move forward versus just discussion. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. And just for the record, I know the town has taken action as far as no power at the gazebo, there's no plugs where they can plug in. Same thing where they were down at the caboose, you know, they left a nice message because we shut the power off on the meter. A nice little "F" you to us. I know I cleaned that off this weekend. But it's, we get it. But that's also, it's not fair to like the people on East Main who have to shut their power off outside and have to turn it on and off, on and off when they need it. So and the same thing with their water, you know, they shut their water off outside so that it doesn't draw our attention, because once they find out that's on, they go there. So I get it. You know, as I said earlier, I don't disagree with Mark whatsoever. He made a motion, I mean, if he probably made a motion here tonight, I know we probably want the full counsel here, but if he made a motion saying November 1st, I probably would not have disagreed with it because it's a fair notice.
I don't want that.
What happens on November 1st?
Right, well, that's the thing. And that's the other option. What happens on November 1st, right? And where do they go? Because all of a sudden, they might pop up right here, you know, or wherever they're going to pop up next. So and it's happened. It's, they've gone from one side of the community, Pulaski Street was the big one, and it went from Pulaski all the way down to here. So they moved from here, they moved to there, they moved there, and they'll continue moving. And yes, you can continue pushing, 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 but again, we've got to make sure that things are done humanely, things, you know, that, I mean, I know I have reached out to individuals. No, I have not reached out to Mr. Nirona, but I have reached out to representatives. I've reached out to whoever I could that I could speak to. There was only one representative that has not returned my call on that matter in this town. And so everybody else has talked to me, and they're looking at it on the state house level too. I get it. I know we have the powers to make those executive orders or ask that question, but, you know, like you said, it's been 60 days since the law has been passed, but we have to look at all severe options. I know I've been on conference calls on, you know, what can we do? And we've had state officials, local officials, police, fire chiefs, town manager, fundamist, and
Thrive.
Thrive have been on there. Those are people that we're trying to work with to help this matter. Unfortunately, it has grown, and it could be right, Mark. It could be because other communities are pushing, but also when you let, when the winter ends and your counts are at 50, and they say you have to get out of Motel 6 by such-and-such a date because the warm weather's here, well, they flock to wherever. Derek, I'm not going to get into that. We're not the safe haven, but they can.
Tell me we're not. Really?
No, we're not.
Father? I think I took a stance tonight numerous times.
Hello, Father Fleming, pastor at St. John and James here, West Warwick. 20 Washington Street is my official address here. I live next door to the gazebo. I live at the gazebo. I see the gazebo from morning until night. I've called the police numerous times. They have always been great coming out. I'm grateful for the West Warwick Police for their candor and their support. The truth is, is that we don't have to be uncharitable and still be just. We can be just and charitable all at once. That's the truth. And we can do it because we can say the truth is, for us to live in a good society, we have to create the good society around us. And if people don't adhere to what our norms are, then they don't belong in our society. That's the truth. We create the society that we want to live in, especially for our children. We want our children to live in a town where they're going to learn how to be citizens of good repute. And when they're confronted with this, they're not learning that, and they're not in an environment that we can control. When we're paying the taxes, when we're caring for the people that are around us, when we're trying to make sure that our communities are safe, it behooves us to make sure that we support our community in the way that we see fit. We are the residents who live here, who pay the taxes, and who care for the people in this town. They're not having meetings about how they can figure out how to best live in this society. No, they're vagrants that are trying to take over, and we have to enforce the laws that we create. We create them. We're here at the meeting. We're the ones who are creating this town and the society. We need to live up to that. And it behooves us to take the matters into our own hands now and make legislation and enforce it. That's the truth. Speaking of the gazebo, I sent a letter a while ago, right before or right after the fencing went up because we had a severe issue there. I recommended that for the gazebo, and perhaps we can do this with other parks, that we make them permit-only use. And that means if you want to use it as a public space, then you have to pull a permit. Doesn't have to cost anybody anything. And if you're without a permit, then you can't stay there. And so if someone comes in and they're a nuisance, the way we can enforce that law is say, listen, you don't have a permit, you're not allowed to be here, you're loitering. If someone isn't a nuisance, then they're not a nuisance, and they're not a bother. But if they're creating a problem, then we have cause because they're not pulling permits to use the space. That's all I have. Thanks.
Paul Villa 15, Janet Drive, and I'll be brief. I've heard a lot of things here tonight. It's time to enforce this. As you mentioned, Councilwoman, we were here last September, and we were talking about this, and here we are a year later, and we're still talking about it. My concern here is the liability of the town. We have a nuisance, we're maintaining the nuisance. It's all over the record. We talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about needles being everywhere, we talk about crimes being committed, and yet we do nothing to change it. The United States Supreme Court has ruled on this, and I know that the ACLU was mentioned earlier, but the U.S. Supreme Court has said you can remove or move these people from town property. And I understand you want to do it the right way and things like that, and I'm not saying to be inhumane about it, but it's town property, and it needs to be vacated, period. My concern is, what happens when one of these crimes is committed against one of those residents that bought us the bike path or bought us town property? Because I know if one of my family members were injured after all this talk for a year or more, okay, and us knowing what's going on, if my child were to step on a dirty needle or anything like that, I'd be coming to see you, okay? And Mr. Williamson would be making some money to defend you because you're a lawholder, period, okay? And I know all of you, okay, and I know where your heart is in this town. And I'm not saying to be inhumane about anything, but the father brought up a good point. These people are not looking to meld into our town and be model citizens. If they were, there would be no problems, okay? We keep going to the same things over and over again. And by the way, while the police and fire departments are dealing with these things, and they do a great job, we have great departments here, they're not where the other places they need to be. So that being said, I'm not going to belate at that point. As a chuckle, I'd like to, I was listening to the school presentation earlier, and I think we need to put on the agenda as well that we should look at down the road, a new police and fire headquarters. I know we're growing out of schools and things, but our police department's been in a building that was built in the 1950s. Our fire department is next door and the headquarters that the floors are falling apart, but yet we don't talk about getting one of those built. And I don't think I'm going to have any kind of same, we won't follow the same route that the schools did, and I won't have a building committee in two weeks. I get it. But we need to put that on the table because these guys and girls deserve a better place to work.
Chief, just to answer that real quick, town manager has been, and the fire chief and police chief have been having heavy discussions and looking at locations, prime locations, where's the best scenarios, and they are looking at it.
Awesome. I'm all in favor of that. One other thing now on the agenda, and you and I have gone back and forth over this a bit in the last week, and you know, and I hate to go on social media with this stuff, but that stuff is still there on Providence Street, behind the fishbowl. It's blocking a crosswalk. It's hampering handicap ramp. I have pictures if anybody else wants to see them, you know? And I waited four or five weeks. I figured maybe it was heavy trash pickup. But yeah, I kind of drew the line because now they're throwing actual trash bags out there, and they're being ripped open on the sidewalk. So it's been about seven weeks now, and I know the 23rd was the date you mentioned. Do you have any idea where we're at with that? Because obviously that landlord is not moving anything.
The letter was sent out on the 19th, and they had to the 23rd to remove the stuff or go to court and pay fines.
Okay.
So also, I'm not here tonight, but I've had a little brief meeting with Nicole and I, up at the Civic Center, and we're talking about fines and how we can, her fines are very light, $25, whatever it may be. So we're looking at possibilities of, you know, a heavier fine, say two, I'm just throwing numbers out there, say 250, and looking at possibly, you know,
say two fifty, and looking at possibly, you know, okay, the town cleans it up right away, but we're hitting you with two fifty and something else, whatever. We're just looking at what we can do there.
And I'm not saying you shouldn't try and work with people, but when you give them a notice, and they basically stick it, "I'm not going to do it," you know, later on down the road, after they've written a violation, it should not be dismissed either. You made us take you to court. You didn't clean it up when you should have. Pay the fine now, all right? Because I heard the broken windows there earlier, which is one of my favorite things. And, and, you know, that's how I feel about every city and town. You don't, you don't go through city, towns like East Greenwich, South Kingston. You don't see what you see when you drive down Providence Street, mattresses. Yeah, I took a ride down there the other day on the way back from BPW, and I snapped four pictures in a matter of a half a mile.
It's not just Providence Street. I mean.
It's everywhere, but my point is, you know, I can understand if it's at a dead-end street somewhere. You may not see it, okay? But, but when you pass it every day on a main thoroughfare in town, something's got to be done about it. And by the way, that property is not the only property, and there is stuff on that property as well. Not only is the sidewalk an issue, and handicap people have not been able to access that sidewalk for probably about seven weeks now, from that ramp anyway. You know, there is stuff on the property itself that needs to be removed as well. So, you know, I would just say that if we're at that stage now where they've been taken into court, it's far beyond, they should be made to pay the fines, and I'm right with you on raising those fines because if you don't fix it, the town's going to not look right, okay? So, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stan Tavak, twelve Gendron Street. Boy, tough night. Anyway, it was interesting, Mr. Williamson. You said that in Windsocket, they moved them out, and where did they go? Do you know? How long did that take, and how well did that work?
My understanding is once it hit the news, the same group that was removed on day one was back in business about seven days later, just in a different spot in the same city.
Okay. Well, it's a very fresh.
By the way, there were all sorts of lawsuits filed by those individuals because of the destruction of their property by the state, which was the city of Windsocket's police.
Well, how do you do it and when you do it? The one thing I wanted to make a point is, I think a big problem is this. There's a lot of organizations that enable them to keep their lifestyle. They give away needles, they feed them, they do this for them. And somebody saw a picture, I, not recently, I thought it showed it to me. It was a freaking grill at the gazebo. So I don't know when that actually happened. I just saw a picture of it, but I think it's.
Joe, you showing pictures still? I got the same.
It just have a lot.
Same picture from Joe. It was actually the night I saw it.
A grill, it's like I just throw up my hands. I said, "This is it. Enough's enough." But it's the, the organizations, and they think they're doing well by these people. They are not. They just enable them to keep their lifestyles, which we have to endure on this street and in the neighborhoods. And it's getting to the point where the, I always, I always say this, the tail's wagging the dog, and it's upside down, and it should never, never be like this. It's, it's wrong. It's wrong. And put your heads together, figure it out, move them out. I don't really care how you do it. We've got the Supreme Court behind us. However, I'm sure there'll be fights against them to up the ladder, but I just, you just can't let it keep on happening and do nothing. Because doing, like that lady said, doing nothing is worse than doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, stake. Do we have any more public comment here? I see somebody raised their hand online. Go online. Oh, we got one more here, then we'll go online. Just state your name and address.
I'm sorry. Michael Glof, and I live at thirty-five Payne Street. So my next-door neighbor was a daycare. So my concern is that that property's sitting there empty now. What is the city doing about, or the town doing about? I know the DPW came by and cleaned it all up, which is great because that was one thing I said to my neighbors. I'm like, now that they're gone, it looks like crap.
Yeah, they quit landscaping right when they said.
Oh, yeah, they landscaped and bailed right out of there. I'm sure they probably owe them money. I knew them, and she knew me because I used to care, I used to watch her property at night. Because I used to tell them, "I have cameras around my house. I watch the property," so no one's thinking. Already somebody dumped a camper over there. Because that's what I'm afraid of, because they're worried about encampments moving. They know that property's empty, and the playground's behind it. I have already witnessed, I'm camera my house, they've already broken into the daycare. They've already tried. I've seen the West Warwick Police over there a few times, checking out the building. And they've already been stealing stuff behind the fence. They already broke the fence in the back, and they're coming in and taking the stuff out to the back. And I noticed the trailer just dumped there a few days ago as I was cutting my grass, and I seen the trailer dumped over there, and I was like, this is what my biggest fear is. And I know I don't want to keep calling the West Warwick Police every time. They've got a bit of things to do, but they can't sit there all day either, to babysit your property. Now, I know the alarm's taken out because I watched the company take it out. I'm not sure about the fire system because I saw those people there taking the panels out. So I don't know even, my biggest concern is there's so many vulnerabilities in that building of them breaking into that building and just taking, and they can make a home out of it. Because as you know, the laws, once they move in, it's a hell of a hard time to get them out, so.
No, that's why I said we need to decide what we're going to do. We don't want to.
I'm glad it's valuable property. It's a beautiful property, and I hope they make the best judgment on what they do with the property. Because my concern is my property, because I'm right, said, I'm right across the street from them. So I'm hoping I can speak for a few of my neighbors out here.
And again, if you have that video, I'm sure the police department would love to have.
Oh, yeah.
That trailer was.
They've come over a few people. John Street is bad. You know, there's an accident over there. I've had cars side swiped over there, and the West Warwick Police have come to my house and asked me, "Can you please pull up their phone so I can see it on the camera, what happened?" And I do it all the time.
Thank you. Thank you for helping keep the neighborhood.
Thank you. No problem. Take care. Thank you.
Let's go online, Zach. I just, can, Rhea?
It's Rhea. My name is Rhea Lovell. Hi.
Just state your address for the record.
Yes, so I am not a West Warwick citizen. I work for the Rhode Island Coalition to End Homelessness. I'm the statewide street outreach coordinator. I did live in West Warwick for five years in Arctic, but I was priced out because the rent was too high, and I have animals, so I couldn't find an apartment. So now I currently do not live in West Warwick. I just wanted to say a few different things for tonight. I work, I've worked in West Warwick for a very long time. I don't necessarily work all the time in West Warwick anymore. I used to work at Thundermist and also with House of Hope, which is another outreach agency that works in West Warwick. These folks that are staying outside, and I can give you the data, I will be coming to next meeting. Ninety-five percent of the folks that stay in West Warwick lived their whole life in the West Warwick Kent County area. They do not want to live in another community that they don't feel comfortable in. No agency is condoning someone to be homeless. Affordability of housing is the problem in this state. So I want to be clear that I, as an individual with a master's degree, wasn't able to afford and to live in West Warwick anymore. I'm unable to afford really anything. So I'm interested to hear from all the residents, and I understand there is a safety concern. There definitely is a safety concern. I would love to be a part of a subcommittee. As I see the problem in every single region, it is a ping-pong effect, right? So you move them from the gazebo, they find somewhere else to stay. You move them from that encampment, they're going to find someone else to stay. The folks in West Warwick do not want to live anywhere else besides in West Warwick, and I think that that is their right as a citizen and as a person that lives in Rhode Island and grew up in Rhode Island. That's all I really wanted to say. I am coming back to the next meeting because I am interested to see, but these are human beings we are talking about. So to say that an agency who works every single day, speaks to these individuals every single day, and tries to get these folks housed, saying that they're keeping them homeless is a really insane fact. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But I'm looking forward to seeing the subcommittee that's formed. And I'd love to hear some other folks that are working with the clients because I know that there are hard-working individuals every single day out there that are probably sitting in this room, listening to me talk right now. But I just want to be clear that if you clear an encampment, these folks are not going to leave West Warwick. They are just going to go to another place in West Warwick. So what we need is more affordable housing for these folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody else online? Any other public comment?
Felix Appalonia. I, ten Friendwood. We, we, we obviously are a society that lives with a sense of law and order. And the only way we're going to get back to a sense of law and order is respectful law and order. Now, how we go about doing that? We have a, we have a town manager that's a former Colonel. We have a good police force. So if we don't get back to some sense of law and order, we have to start somewhere. That's all I have to say.
Any other public comment? Hearing no, I need a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Have a good night.
Number seventeen.
Somebody's watering the front row. Felix, is that your water?